Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Future Barbados Midtown Hall. And I have one of the tech members come in and assist, please. So this evening, we are going to have a fireside chat with Prime Minister, the Honorable Mia Amor Motley, as we're discussing Charter of Barbados and the future of work. My name is Sharita Granham, and it's my absolute pleasure to be your moderator for this evening's conversation. And at this time, I would wish to acknowledge the Honorable Mia Amor Motley, Prime Minister of Barbados. Welcome, and thank you so much for hosting us so graciously on the beautiful grounds of Ilaro Court this evening. I wish to acknowledge the Honorable Santiya Bradshaw, Minister of Education, Technological and Vocational Training. Sansha K. McConney, Minister of Innovation, Science and Smart Technology. The Honorable Kirk Humphrey, Minister of Maritime Affairs and the Blue Economy. The Honorable Marsha Caddo, Minister in the Ministry of Economic Affairs and Investment. The Honorable Dwight Sutherland, Minister of Youth, Sports and Community Empowerment. I also wish to acknowledge the CEO of the BIDC Corporation, Mr. Mark Hill, who is with us this evening. Special Advisor to the Prime Minister and Advisor to Future Barbados, Mr. Jonathan Reed. Global Advisor to Future Barbados, Mr. Adrian Gill, Future Barbados Directors and Cohort. And all of our specially invited guests, young and young at heart, welcome, thank you. So this evening, we are going to explore the relevance of our 21st Century Charter of Barbados. It's relevant to a range of issues while paying special attention to the future of work. And this evening is going to be really about frank and open engagement. And I'm putting everybody on notice because you are not an audience. Everybody here is an equal partner in this conversation. So all that means is that I get to ask you questions as well, so just prepare for it. So without further delay, Prime Minister. I think you will agree with me that we satisfied all of the formalities and we can jump right in, right into this conversation. Okay, alright.
Yes, let's go.
Alright, so I'll find-
Good night, and welcome to everyone, welcome to Ilaro Court. I think this is the second time Future Barbados has been here in this spot. The first time was with the United Nations Secretary General Antonio Guterres, the Secretary General of ANCTAD Rebecca Greenspan, Secretary General of Commonwealth Patricia Scotland, and the Secretary General of our own Caribbean community, most importantly, Calabani. So this evening, I've asked some of my colleagues to come, and this is your chance to be able to engage in a frank way. And for us more to hear you, but we are really here to clarify any questions that you may have. But we want you to speak with us, and we want Barbados to hear us speak. Because as I will say more and more, we have a duty to make this country a place where persons who are mature Barbadians can live safely, can realize the best possible life that they can, especially on the investments that they've made or the social security that they have to rely on, that they can be not dependent in ways that make them live out either forms of the evening days of their lives in ways that they would not want to. We have that responsibility. But we have a duty to build up Barbados in a way that young people want to live here, work here, and build out here. Because if we don't do it, then we will not have the capacity to sustain the mature persons in our population in the way in which we want to do. As all of us individually are appreciative of the fact that we were raised by them and brought to this point to be productive citizens by them. So that the balance between the two, especially as we continue to see the generational clashes continue to increase. In the year 2000, when asked how and what were probably the greatest issues when we were dealing with the National Committee on Reconciliation, KU and the Ministry of Youth Affairs at the time, in a different capacity, Sir Keith Hunt, who was then Principal of the University of the West Indies Cave Hill Campus and Chairman of the Public Service Commission, was Chair of that commission. And he asked me as a young Minister of Culture and Education, Santiya, and Youth Affairs, what I thought to be the greatest problems facing the country at the time, whether racial, whether class, generational, etc. I felt as far back as then that it was generational. They didn't believe at first, and by the time they finished the report, and by the time they engaged again, and then with the subsequent report chaired by Sir Roy Marchum in 2006, in both instances, it realized, they realized that the generational differences were huge. We are here because we see you. We hear you, we feel you, we feel that there is a platform that we have to do. This country is already not in a position to replace its population, has not replaced it since 1980. But worse than that, in 13 years' time, our workforce, our labor force will be smaller than it is today. Those are very serious implications for you. In addition to the climate crisis, in addition to the world that is fighting multiple pandemics. Because we speak only of COVID-19, but you've heard me speak about AMR, antimicrobial resistance, where the antibiotics just not working as effectively in killing the super viruses as they were before. So if we are going to help build this country, it can only be through you. And it therefore means that your voice matters, your participation matters, your ability to inspire matters, your ability to be committed and loyal matters. And therefore, that is why I have chosen, in fact, this is the one event that I asked for in independence as we go into parliamentary republic. And I hope that it will be meaningful for you and for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Prime Minister. You started us off on your right, your right, your right note. I think coming out of the recent parliamentary debate on the resolution of the Charter of Barbados, you perhaps gave one of the most powerful and inspiring impactful speeches today, and there were a lot to choose from. So I want to take this opportunity as a proud young Barbadian to say thank you for taking such a principled stance on behalf of all Barbadians. You spoke to reconciliation, bridging the generational gap, why it is that we all need to put our shoulders to the plow. And I think that is all encapsulated in Charter of Barbados. And really, all the Charter of Barbados represents our greatest aspirations, our greatest hopes, dreams, ambitions. Barbados at its best, and Barbadians doing their best. So I think you captured that very well. But Prime Minister, I want to start off with a question for you to kind of contextualize this discussion a little further. There's been some understandable skepticism from a lot of young Barbadians on how we take all of these ambitions laid out in this Charter of Barbados that are supposed to represent the best of us, from mere words to actual reality. And hearing that concern, I was actually reminded of something I heard quite recently on the distinction between leadership and management. So my question to you is, what, what is the key distinction between leadership and management? And do you see young Barbadians as co-managers in the process of our national development?
Fundamentally, we have to have leadership at every stage in state of our society. Not just at my level, at the level of country, but at the level of institutions, Mr. Hill is here, at the level of communities, at the level of families. Because leadership allows you to be able to make decisions first and foremost from a principle position and to be able to accept the consequences of your actions, to be able to see beyond tomorrow to five, 10 years, 20 years from now, and to stay the course and to recognize that very often, history does not go in a straight line, but that the upward trajectory must be capable of being measured. Even if you have, look at today. Today, in some parts of the country, we had four or five inches of rain on the east coast. So not every day is a sunny day. And leadership requires that you have that inner peace and courage that allows you to stay the course on the path that you set out, anchored by principles and anchored by a clear sense that whatever happens, I shall accept the consequences of my action. More often than not, management is about making something happen. And, and, and how do we manage to make it happen, and whatever, whatever. And managers very often may not always be leaders. So we have to be very clear about that. And, and in some instances, leaders need strong management to help them with the inspirational. They have, they deal with the inspirational part, but leaders need managers to help them execute and carry and keep things together. So the balance is very clear. But what I want you to do for me also, Sharita, because as I said, yes, we want to hear on these broader topics, not so much from us, and the other younger ministers, I think everybody here is younger than me today.
I can't show them enough heart.
Which is a most unusual. Having been the youngest member of parliament for about four sessions, most, most unusual. So I want to enjoy that. But I also feel that at some point, you need to explain to the country what Future Barbados is, and in key short words, what are the seven main challenges? Because it was in fact under this, on this location that we went from five to seven on the last time on which we spoke. But I am so inspired by what is going to be the output of Future Barbados that I feel that it would be wrong for us not to share the project, Ms. Eitel, with, with, with the country and with the wider world as to what the seven things are, okay? Seven challenges.
PM, it's almost like you're peeping out my notes here. So it brings us nicely to Future Barbados and the focus of the Future Barbados program. So my question to you, Mr. Tamisha Eitel Harvey, Director of Future Barbados and entertainer extraordinaire. Does Future Barbados see itself in this role as co-manager in national development? And why does the contribution of youth even matter?
Testing. Ooh, you can all hear me. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to this nice, cool night here at Ilaro Court. Thank you, Sharita, for that great introduction. My name is Tamisha Eitel, sometimes Harvey, and I am the Director of Future Barbados. Now, the question you all have is what, oh, you had to turn me down, I'm very sorry, but I'm ready now, guys. I actually wrote a script, and Prime Minister, you're leading by example, so I'm using my phone to, to, to give my speech. So Future Barbados is a hybrid think tank and accelerator and incubator. We're dubbed a moonshot factory and have assembled a cohort of thinkers, dreamers and doers. Some of them are here, and some of them are online as far as England and the Netherlands. So wave to them on Zoom. Hi, guys. We have someone in New York as well. Hi, guys. So we're truly a hybrid program, talking, working with young people in completely remote settings right now. We have, the goal of Future Barbados, and this particular project is called Project Catapult, is to develop social enterprises that reimagine and rethink solutions to our problems faced in Barbados. The cohort was initially in five challenges, and then we hit to seven challenges, and now we have actually nine challenges that we are working on, which will develop a blend of policy and practical approaches. You can't have the practical approaches without the policy support. So let's talk a bit about our challenges, and throughout the evening tonight, you will hear from some of our challenge leads. So we'll start with Future Health. The Future Health pillar looks at issues of combating NCDs that we deal with here in Barbados and across the region. Future Blue and Future Green look at the blue economy and challenges with combating climate change, and looking at activating opportunities within these fields. Future Safe looks at citizen security and mechanisms to reduce crime, recidivism rates, and strategies towards making Barbados safe. All of these challenges are grounded on three core things. The first is future tech. You cannot have a sustainable, innovative future without technology at the base. Each social enterprise will create low-cost, tech-based solutions to help combat the social challenges that we face. Future well-being is also very core to it. Future well-being is integral as we change hearts and minds and create truly supportive mental health and wellness structures in our society to make active, active support for youth and making us a happier Barbados as a whole. Finally, it's all about the future of work. Every young Beijing wants a decent wage, innovative opportunities and supportive work environments. All of these will be focused on education as well. And most recently, with the support of the Ministry of Education, we'll be working on our Future Learn pillar, which will help in the ministry's transformation of the educational system. Future Barbados serves as proof that when young people are given true agency, supported by resources and trust, real change can happen. We intend to fast-track transformation and drive meaningful, impactful and innovative change by doing in six months what may typically take years in other instances. That is Future Barbados.
One thing that, that really stuck out for me in that amazing summary of what is perhaps one of the most transformational programs we have had in Barbados today, in Future Barbados. Thank you, Tamisha, was the whole matter of changing hearts and changing minds. And I think she captured that when she spoke to the Well-being pillar. And well-being, I think, is, is perhaps the common denominator going through all of those pillars. I'd like to pose a question to the, the lead of the Well-being pillar, Mr. Alex Downs. Alex, are you here? Hi, Alex. No stranger to matters of well-being and, and the power of culture as a development tool, and, and how, how, how much symbolism matters to us in our day-to-day lives. Alex, do you see any value in the Charter of Barbados to your work?
So good night, everyone. Hi, good afternoon, Prime Minister. Thanks for hosting the Future Barbados team and the host of Young People, and Young at Heart, as was said earlier. Sharita, so your question, I could answer in one word, obviously being yes, I see value in it. But if you would permit me, I'd like to at least, at least explain why you do see that value and what value I do see in the Charter.
Absolutely, it was an open-ended question, so have at it.
Oh, great. So I see the Charter, and this is something we've discussed together. I see the Charter as the guiding principle for Barbados going forward, and as a young person, something to look towards. And we also then understand that well-being is essentially grounded in ensuring that, you know, there's enfranchisement for every citizen in the country. And anyone who may be of Barbadian descent, Barbadian by birth, but anywhere around the world. And as Tamisha would have said, I am co-lead for the Well-being team. And over the last few weeks, we've kind of sat and discussed among ourselves and with the other Future Barbados members, what essentially does well-being mean? And we've realized that it's something that's multi-sectoral, so it's something that touches on financial well-being, psychological well-being, and there are a whole host of different areas and aspects. psychological Wellbeing, and there are a whole host of different areas and aspects. And what that means is that if we're going to consider Wellbeing, then it needs to be inclusive of all. And in doing that, you know, we have an audience of many young people, different ages, different backgrounds, different races. And yet we're all here discussing, listening, and attempting to understand each other. And there's respect amongst each other. And so when we talk about the Charter, for example, it's something that's supposed to add value, something that's supposed to show us what we are as Barbadians, the respect for each other regardless of whatever background we have. You know, we all have our disagreements about certain things. So we disagree some things about the process, or certain things, we disagree about how we get to where we're going. But we all know that we do this with love and respect for each other. So when we think about then the Charter, especially as a Wellbeing co-lead, then we understand that that is value and understand we respect each other. I think that's the foundation for anything that we do. So that's the long answer to your question. The short answer is yes, and the rest, you know, I think everyone else would pretty much agree on, so.
I think I prefer the long answer.
The long answer.
Thank you so much. So we, we've pretty much established that Wellbeing, that social justice, and enfranchisement, you know, that's, that's, those are really important things to understanding the Barbadian brand of development and progress. I mean, we, we, we see these things in so many of our, our policies. Um, some visionary, some more memorable, memorable than others. If I was to pick one, I would say perhaps the Free Whole Tenetries Act is, is one of the most notable, um, examples of enfranchisement of people in, in the history of Barbados. Um, but it points to a much larger issue. And that, that is that every single one of us matters. And that's the message that repeats throughout the contents of the Charter, which in its broader sense is the story of Barbados. Yeah, um, Prime Minister spoke to the fact that, you know, we're a country of less than 300,000 people. Uh, she recently stated, cited a statistic that says our population is about 80 to 100,000 people less than we should be at right now in order for us to maintain a certain development trajectory. That is a scary reality. So really, you know, what it says to me is that we can't afford to leave anybody behind. Um, so this brings me to the matter of crime and criminal justice reform. Um, I know Future Barbados has been doing extensive research in this regard. But before I get to the, the co-lead, um, Mr. Shane Edwards, I, I would love to ask Mr. Jonathan Reed, um, where are you, Jonathan? I saw you earlier. Uh, he, he, here he is. Hi, Jonathan. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I know you guys have been engaged in some research in this regard in terms of, um, criminal justice reform. And, um, I'd like to invite you to just make mention of it, and then I'll go to Shane.
You trick me into doing this. Normally hang out at the back. Um, yes, I mean, criminal justice reform is really at the core of um, a lot of the things that we're talking about regarding Wellbeing. Fundamentally, as a small place, you only have 300,000 people. You can't waste a single individual. Our role is to maximize the capacity of everyone. No matter, you know, what age they are, what stage in life they are, we meet them where they are with an attempt to maximize their contribution to society and their happiness on this earth. Um, so fundamentally, having looked at our statistics, we do surprisingly bad as a small place in terms of level of imprisonment, um, um, per capita, level of prisons of remand per capita. Our numbers are in the bottom 20 percentile in the world. Um, and looking at those numbers, we started to have some deep dives into why is this the case? What are the critical points that we're not catching people at, um, and doing strategic interventions in their life? How are we thinking more about suppression in terms of stopping crime before it happens? And converting, um, opportunities to have, um, people have happier, more empowered lives going down a wrong path? So we had deep dives, um, with the BDF, deep dives of the prison, deep dives of probation, deep dive with GIS, deep dive with the Ministry of Education. And, and we've been mapping out some frameworks where we think that we can intervene at critical moments. We had a, a very insightful, and he was pushing all these different type of, um, in, independence-related events, um, Commodore Sherland at the BDF. But he made time for us and he said, listen, 20 years ago, I was a fundamentalist. I was very strong on the fact that I felt someone without a criminal record is the only person that is justified in entering the army. But I think I've changed. I think I've fundamentally understood that BDF and the army and discipline and structure provides an opportunity for all young Barbadians. So how can we reform our guidelines? How can we reform our entry to meet Barbadians where they are? And have a greater process of inclusion. Um, so, you know, we've seen impact in a very short time that we've been doing things, and I'm, I want to hand over to Shane, who has much more details on that area.
Thank you so much. I think that was very critical information for us to hear. Every single one of us matters. And we have to meet people where they are. Um, Shane, can you tell us how this, this understanding, um, of equality and Wellbeing has informed the work of the team focused on Future Safe?
Um, yeah, good night, everyone. Lovely being here, saying hi to everyone, looking so beautiful and nice. And, um, Future Safe i- is really is something personal. And it is not something where we could just throw a blanket over it. We have to really get to the nitty-gritty of it and see what the, what the real problems are from the inside. And as Jonathan was saying, after coming out of meetings with the prison, GIS, probation office, even with the Ministry of Education, um, we, we see some of the issues from start. And a lot of the issues is, is a problem with data. And when we mention reform, we want to start with this reform from as early as primary school. And things that your grandmother would have taught you, or your mother, or your aunt, we can't rely on the, the families at home to teach these things. We're going to have to instill these things in the schools. So for instance, I remember when I was in school, I don't know who did it, you had a class called etiquette. When I was in primary school. They taught you how to, how to speak, how to be manly, how to interact with each other. And, and that is missing from, from the system going up the line. So it's something that we are suggesting as part of our reform that you get that basic etiquette in every school, mandatory. And when we talk about etiquette, we speak in just basic, simple, human skills to each other. And then as you graduate to secondary school, you get something called business etiquette. Because what we are doing is that we're, we're giving persons degrees, we're giving persons C X Cs. But then when they get into the workplace, they don't know how to handle situations, they don't know how to interact with each other. And then that, that creates strife, that creates anger, that, that takes things to a different level. So one of the, the ways we're looking at reform is in the schools in that specific way. And after speaking to our Minister Santia, we realized that we need to track information of persons and intervene before it gets to the level where they commit a serious crime. So we want to kind of create a, a report system where if you have an incident of behavior, any type of deviant behavior in primary school, we have it on record. Not that we're brandishing it as a criminal, but we have it on record that we can start to look at what is causing this behavior. And we keep it that every teacher can access it. So when you move from primary school to secondary school, we're still tracking you. And if it is that, we can find a way to reach out to you, see what's happening at home, see what's happening to you personally, see if you're interested in something else other than what you're studying. And really deal with it on a personal level. So we don't just have someone just giving trouble, they give trouble primary school, secondary school, go GIS, go prison, then the dead. And you, you just let all that information, all that data. So Future Safe is about getting that data that we can make informative decisions to intervene at the right time to prevent you from actually getting to that stage. And that's, that's just one side of it. Another side of it, I'm going to mention quickly. We are thinking about this app. Um, in New York and other countries in the world, it's called a, a Citizen App. We're still looking at the name, we would call it in Barbados, something like BDO Safe or something like that. But this app would be accessible to every Beijan, no matter religion, sexuality, parish, or level of education. It includes all. And the app capitalizes on the, the close na- nature of Barbadian society, where each man is his brother's keeper. And persons are typically eager to get involved and share a story. It is like a, a personal safety network that empowers you to protect yourself and the people and places you care about. So the app is dedicated, social, is a dedicated social media platform where users can post real-time updates, footage, warnings, reports with 911 alerts, instant help from crisis responders, safety tracking for family and friends. So this app is looking to bring all Beijans together. Every Beijan can access this app free, just on your phone, just on your devices, and you can make a contribution as a Beijan. And the app is twofold because what we're looking to do, we believe that there's a lack of surveillance in Barbados in terms of cameras, in terms of lighting. And we're not only talking on land, we're talking maritime on the ocean. After speaking with the Commodore from BDF in terms of coast scan and stuff, there's a lack of the way they're able to track vessels on the water. There's a lack of visibility on land. And when we do install these cameras and get this surveillance on, on the ocean as well, you can access the app as a, a member of one of the forces. You will have a different login. And you can log in the app, you can see any camera close to a bank. We don't want any more red dressing incidents, you know, anything along that line. So you can access the camera close to a bank, on the water, anything. And everything is just coming through this particular app just to help Beijans get to that level of safety. And just one more thing to mention. With our conversation with the prison, it really got us thinking a lot. Um, we really need to do more to reduce the recidivism and, and to stop persons from really going back to prison on a regular. And we looked at the, the opportunities currently being provided in prison. It's only carpentry, tailoring, and, and baking. And we believe if we could provide more opportunities in the prison, we can help persons become more efficient and be able to provide for their families on a different level. So when they go, they don't even have to think about crime. They can make money just by the snap of a finger and have a different approach to the way they, they're approaching life right now. So we definitely need some more reform in the prison, in the schools, and then of course with this app. So that's just a couple of things that, uh, Future Safe is, is currently working on. But there's a lot more, but we don't want release any more information at, at this time. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. CA.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So two things, um.
Yeah.
Where can I download this app? This is amazing. How long have you been working on this framework? Because it has to be, have been a year.
Well, um, thanks to my, my team, of course, Antonio, Sharifa, and of course, Damon here with us, with us tonight. And we've not, we've not been working long. This is what, a couple of weeks we've been on it. And we believe that everything that happens doesn't have to be invented from scratch. We, we have been researching and seeing what other countries have been doing to solve the same problems that Barbados has. It's like, we don't have problems that are unique to Barbados. We have problems that everyone else has. So as we can see what they're doing, see the effective rate and the, and the whole success, what it could be if done right, and we just try to mirror it and make it more suitable for our market and just move forward with it.
Well, thank you so much, Shane. Um, and congratulations on a job well done so far. I mean, that is, that is seriously impressive. This is not lip service. I am stunned. I had no idea that was the depth, um, that you guys had gotten to in that very short space of time. So thank you very much. Uh, Minister Brad Shaw, I know I promised, um, I'm going to be in hot seat. I'm going to stick to that promise, just a little bit. But I mean, Shane touched on some really critical things. And one of the things that came to the fore was how multi-dimensional the whole idea of educational reform is. It's not just about putting children in a classroom and writing some stuff on a chalkboard.
It most certainly isn't. And I think that, let me just first of all say that my experience with this team, Future Barbados, um, was a really good one. It was refreshing. Um, we had the opportunity to engage with young people that are, are people, you know, um, understanding how, what the system was to them in terms of education. And wanting as well to be able to, to change a lot of what they had gone through and to give back to Barbadian society. And I must tell you, my team in education was extremely appreciative for the opportunity to really engage. You know, sometimes you don't know if you're doing the right thing. Sometimes you're not sure if the vision that you have is going to be well-executed. But I can say that we came away feeling really good about the, the journey that we were on. Um, and so based on the comments that have been made in terms of the reforms, um, yeah, everybody has a different perspective on what is reform. Some people think it is about abolition of the common entrance. Um, some people think it is more skills-based subjects within schools. Um, the truth is that we see it as a holistic approach to education. It, it involves your Wellbeing, as I said before. It does involve, uh, what, what, what you guys are working on in relation to looking at what are the behavioral issues that our students are experiencing? What is stopping them from achieving their full potential? How do we not lose children in the system? Because oftentimes we are losing kids, we are losing kids, and they're falling through the cracks because nobody has monitored the challenges that they were having from the youngest age. I mean, we've done a lot since we've come to office to make sure that we have like all the social workers and the, the school counselors in place. But there's still more to be done. And, and I think in our discussions certainly, um, with Future Barbados, one of the things that came up is that we do have a system right now called Open Emiss which can track behavior. And we agreed that we would work with the team to look at what we have existing and how perhaps young Barbadians can help us to improve that system. How can we get our teachers to utilize the system so that the information as well that's coming back out helps them to know the type of children that are, are coming to them, but also the types of needs that the children have as well? Um, you know, education touches on everybody's lives. I, I have a saying that I have to put out with my, my colleagues in cabinet where everybody's an expert on education. And I also have to put out with the Prime Minister, who was the former Minister of Education, um, for whose vision I continue to execute. Because a lot of things that, um, she would have put in place when she was in the ministry, um, there was, it was a journey, there was a pathway, there are still things that we have to complete. And a lot of what I think that this group, Future Barbados, is, is looking to do is going to help us to really complete that cycle. It's going to help us to really bring up, bring closure to that as well. So I'm excited about the, the opportunities that lie ahead, um, with this team. They came into my ministry and I, I told them, Mr. Jonathan, um, that I want them to be a part of what we are doing because it, it really is bigger than just, you know, one area in education. It's the technical side, it is trying to have that financial literacy within the system. Um, you know, they're all interested in using technology to make a difference in the lives of our young people. And, um, you know, I, I see so much potential for us to now start speaking not about being consumers anymore, but about being creators and about being innovators. It's like this is a new dimension that we're in where we can now talk about these things. And it's not something that we just, you know, talk about and it ha- it doesn't come to life. Um, we actually have young people who are creators of apps, who are trying to find those solutions to everyday problems. And, and I just want to say, Sharita, that, you know, I, I was one of those young people that when I finished my degree and I came back to Barbados, I, I felt like I had learned so many things on my, on my degree that I, because I did law, um, overseas. And at the time, Barbados wasn't ready for me. There were so many things that you were exposed to, but there was just not that opportunity to be able to do what you want. And I'm sure many of you feel the same way. I'm sure many people who have passed through the system feel the same way. What we want to do as a government is to give you that opportunity where even if you go outside and you, you explore, you know, certain opportunities that you can come back to Barbados and be part of the solution. Because we know how frustrating it can be not to, to feel, to feel sometimes as though Barbados is not ready for you. Or Barbados is, the doors are not opening for you to be able to find those solutions. And as I said, I think I share with all my colleagues here that, you know, this is really a moment in time. And the Charter is the foundation. But really, this really helps us to bring together and the generations and to be able to create a better Barbados for our people as well.
Thank you for that. Well said. Um, and kudos for seeing the, um, the synergies because I mean, government does not get a, a very good rap when it comes to being able to spot opportunities to partner and partner strategically. And I think this is a, this, this partnership between the Ministry of Education and Future Barbados is, is, is very visionary. So well done. Um, Shane, I'm sorry to, um, keep you, I mean, this is, this is interesting conversation. This is an interesting discussion. We cannot be talking about Wellbeing and, um, the safety of Barbados and Barbadians and only stay on, you know, schools. We have to, we have to now go into the homes. Today actually happens to be the, um, International Day for the Elimination of Gender-Based Violence. Um, I, I certainly think that that, that is relevant as we speak about a safe Barbados and creating safe spaces, making Barbados disposable of care for everyone. I know Minister Kettle has, um, a particular interest in this, this, this particular subject. Um, I don't know if you want to jump in here and make a contribution?
Thanks. Uh, yes, I, I think it's important, especially today, beginning of the 16 days of activism, uh, to be able to say something about it. The, the work that Future Safe is doing is tremendous as one of the pillars. Uh, but I think that as we talk about education and what the new education looks like, one of the things that we seem to believe is that we can teach financial literacy, we can teach all of these different subjects, but we can leave it to individuals to figure out how to relate as men and but we can leave it to individuals to figure out how to relate as men and women. And that it is not something that we also have to have conversations about from the time children are zero.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that is one of the reasons that we are plagued, as we are, with the high incidence of gender-based violence. And I think it's something that I would love to see, um, you as young people be able to start to find the solutions to. It is, it is a, it is a multifaceted solution. It has to do with the judiciary, it has to do, um, with police, it has to do though with the culture of how we relate. That's one of the things that we saw so clearly in the charter. But I think that it has to move from the realm of being something that is whispered about and move to the mainstream of how we teach young people to relate. Uh, and, and to not be shy to have conversations, uh, about, about these things. So I think that as the work goes forward, uh, one of the things that, when we talk about citizen security, we have to look at the different ways that, that lack of security manifests. Uh, I think that one of the problems that we have to solve once and for all is this issue of gender-based violence, uh, and, and its many forms. And so it is, it is a, a challenge that I, I know that you all are equal to and that I'm interested to see what you come up with.
Absolutely. Um, you hit some, some really critical points. I mean, for us, um, as young generations, but as young women in this country, it is overwhelming the types of traumas that you have to deal with on a day-to-day basis. Great culture, um, anti-women, um, sentiment. I mean, these are things that are very pervasive. They manifest in so many different ways. And young women in this country honestly have a right to exist and feel safe in their own country. And, and unless we start with the conversations and the very open and honest conversations and start to confront a lot of these, these really dirty habits that we have as a country, that's the reality. If, if we cannot be honest enough about what the problem is, it's gonna be very difficult to get to the solution. So I support you one hundred percent, and I certainly am sure that, um, the Future Barbados, the Future Safe team is gonna take up that challenge. And for me, it, it, it brings to the fore the number of vulnerabilities we have in Barbadian society. But a part of our national development conversation has always been about converting vulnerabilities to opportunities. Um, I think I'd like to move the conversation forward a bit, um, so we can incorporate some of the other Future Barbados pillars. And while we are on the topic of, um, vulnerabilities, two that come to mind immediately um, are our extremely high incidence of, uh, non-communicable diseases and our existence in this tiny country as a monolingual society. So I wanna invite, uh, the team these, well, sorry, you know, we exist smack dab in the middle of an increasingly globalized world. We speak one language. How are we engaging? How are we building relationships? How are we going after opportunities? Is one language a limitation? And if we acknowledge that it is, what are we doing to ensure that Barbados, um, Barbados, that Barbados, um, does what it needs to do? I don't wanna preempt what the work that, um, the team working on Future Speak is doing. Uh, but let's, yeah, let's start with Future Speak. Can you tell me, how have you gone about attempting this conversion of vulnerability to opportunity in the work that you're engaged in? Um, that's Megan.
Yes, it is.
Hi, Megan, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. Hi, everyone. Uh, well, I'm co-lead for Future Speak along with my partner, Seamus. And I'll start with what our mandate is. Basically, it's to design a roadmap to ensure that Barbadian students, um, are able to speak a second language by twenty twenty-six. Now, as you were alluding to, we live in a globalized society. And what is that, we, we, at this point, we cannot deny the need for a second language, a foreign language. Um, I can give you some stats. Uh, Switzerland attributes ten percent of its GDP to the fact that its, um, population is multilingual. Conversely, Britain is losing three point five percent of its GDP because it's monolingual, monolingual, sorry. I would like to see the stats for the Caribbean and Barbados in particular. I'm sure it won't be anything to celebrate. But that is something that definitely we do need to address. And in regard, we don't even need those types of stats. We can look at Latin America. It is our southern brothers and sisters' close proximity, but the trade relations with them, if I were to be frank, probably is pretty abysmal. Um, what can we do about it? When there are opportunities there, how many, how much opportunities have we missed out on? To work, to play, to live, to invest, to build a business, grow a business, partner? All those things we've missed out on because of a language and potential cultural barrier? When you put it like that, it does seem a bit sad, for lack of a better word. So Future Speak recognizes this, and we've come up with some ideas that will be inclusive as well. Uh, we can go from anything from developing an immersive school where you're not just learning French and Spanish and any other language you choose, but you're learning geography in another language, you're learning chemistry in another language. Your environment from the time you step on that compound is in another language. That is pretty intense, but it is critical at this point that we invest in our future, invest in our genera, our young generation, um, to be able to participate on the global stage. Uh, other ideas that we have obviously are not just targeted at schools, but we want that anyone and everyone and anyone who's interested in exposing themselves to a new language, a new culture, has that opportunity regardless of economic background and socio-economic status. So we're looking at things that we could implement in the community. What does that mean? Again, immersion is the key. So therefore, we want to do things that allow for you to have a community space where you're learning a new skill in another language. You're engaging with the diaspora of another country who've settled here and made Barbados their home. These opportunities allow for us not only to learn a language, but also get an idea of what other cultures are like, to see the similarities between me and you, and realize that the only thing preventing us from forming a connection is the language that we speak. Because at the end of the day, most people want to be listened to, heard and understood. And a language should not be the barrier to that. So we believe that Future Speak is on the path to create initiatives that are inclusive, that will create dynamic global citizens with Beijan roots, and that will be able to spread the message of that is Barbados wherever they go. Because we spoke about business, but what about the opportunities to share the message that is Barbados, I spoke to that earlier, also champion our causes? We go on a global stage, we do a phenomenal job. I don't think anyone will be, put that in dispute. We do it primarily in English, which is fantastic. But what, how much more connections can we make? How much more can we engage with the world? How much more can we deepen self-south cooperation, deepen regionalism? If we were able to do that in their language? Because at the, as I mentioned before and alluded to, language is a connector. It's what unifies us. So the ability to share our stories, advocate for changes that we want, to be able to champion causes that are dear and, and dear to Barbados and share our interests, that in another language, to me, would be a bit, a better idea of how we can connect to one another. And I think that Future Speak is on path to create initiatives that will help put us in a position that we're able to do a much better job of selling Barbados to the world and bringing people into the fold and onto our side as we advocate for more and more changes that would only better our future and those of our children.
Well said, Megan. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
So on to another vulnerability that we, we hope that we're converting, um, future health.
Hi.
Hello.
Evening, everyone.
Before we go to future health, Marsha, your degree in economics is in what?
In Spanish.
Oh, I didn't know that.
So that, within the cabinet, you know, tha- that was one of the things that commended Marsha to me as the leader of the party, but also as Prime Minister in terms of the capacity to serve the cabinet. And, and, and I can't underscore sufficiently the importance of being able to have that capacity. I, I myself am promising to pick back at my Spanish and French. Because when I pick up a document, I can get the essence of what is in it. But I have lost the ear from not speaking and using it and feel as though if ever I get a chance, I will spend two months in a Spanish-speaking country and it will come, and two months in Marne, Nico, Guadalupe and it will come, so please.
But, but, Prime Minister, you know, when Megan was speaking, I, I, I almost nodded my head off because the idea of immersion is key. And I will say to anyone, uh, the, the way to do it is, um, I know that one of the things we talked about as a government is having an opportunity for young people to go um, and spend time in another country. Uh, you know, I really think that's important. But I also think, you know, on a day-to-day basis, when Megan was talking about how we advocate on the, on the world stage, you know, I, as you know, um, do a lot of work with the Inter-American Development Bank and in the, in the Latin American and Caribbean context. And there are times when I am sitting in between panels or in meeting rooms and people are speaking in Spanish and they're thinking, okay, well, we'll just talk among ourselves. Uh, and then, uh, you know, they'll say a few things and I'm able to say, oh, is that so? Um, well, from the perspective of the Caribbean. And they are shocked, but they are happy. Because they have been put in the position where they've always had to come to our side to speak English. Uh, and Megan, you're perfectly correct. It is not just about the content. It is also about the spirit of their culture. And when you can connect on that, that takes you really far down the road.
If I can just say, and Jeffrey Bostick, by the way, also is bilingual, Anne Ambassador and Noel Lynch. So we have a number of people, um, in cabinet or serving in the government. But, um, one of the reasons why we introduced Santiago, the speaking of Spanish at primary schools, and at the time, the Ministry of Finance wouldn't let me go beyond a certain moment. I hope that the Minister of Finance will let the Minister of Education go beyond that moment now. But, but the bottom line is, is that at that early age, it's not only about the language, as you and Marsha said, it's also about the culture, it's about the stories, the folk music, the games, all of the things that give you the curiosity. And that's why one of the first decisions I took as Minister of Education was the Community College Language Lab. Now, I know that Minister Cummins is working on partnerships with Hotel Palm Marine, the Gina and Norma Holder Hospitality Institute. But one of the things that we feel should be a distinguishing feature in that institute, Santiago, you and I have discussed, is the ability for that institute to be bilingual in its, in its training. Because if we can train people in hospitality to be bilingual upfront, can you imagine how much further they can go in terms of the capacity to move about in the Americas?
Yeah. Prime Minister, before we move off from this topic, I remember, uh, very distinctly, and I know COVID has certainly, um, set us off that trajectory, but the, you expressed the intention to ensure that every Barbadian under a certain age, every young Barbadian would have the opportunity to travel. Um, certainly that speaks to issues of tolerance and learning to appreciate not just your own culture, but other people's culture. Is that something that, that is still?
I, I mean, COVID has displaced a lot of things that we've wanted to do in the last twenty-one months. But we feel strongly that if we can get our economic foundations back where we want it to be, one of the things we should strive to be able to achieve is to ensure that every Barbadian child, at least at either post-secondary or tertiary, or maybe even at the form, should be able to go to Guyana or Suriname or Costa Rica to be able to spend at least four to six weeks. It's not gonna be three-star hotel nor nothing so. But equally, when I was a student and we went on school trips, it wasn't two-star or one-star hotel. And you had to share and you had to do everything. But the experience of being able to engage in another culture, even as, and I'll give you this one just for the books. The first one was when I won the Barclays spelling bee. That tells you how old I am. Because Barclays don't even exist in Barbados for how long now, Dwight? Twenty years, thirty years?
My time has got Bristol House spelling bees here.
That too. But the trip was a trip to St. Lucia. And it was me, Rosin Smith Miller, who I think is president of the bar, and Michelle Witz was a judge, I think it was. Anyhow, so we go to Cafes and they put us down with U Fort. I must have been about twelve years old. Every night, the others inside the house and me, as usual, hot foot, won't be outside the house. And wait, it was in the middle of an election campaign. Problem is, is St. Lucia is top patois. And here I am, in the middle of this campaign. And every night I listen into these public meetings in patois, but totally and completely consumed. Now, those opportunities, and that's the first real engagement on my own, going to meetings as a deliberate choice of mine because of the interest and wanting to see how people moved and interacted, et cetera. And I just think that it is so important to give our children that opportunity to be able to see another place and then to appreciate what they have in this place or what they do not have. Because that ability to be global citizens with Beijan roots is where we must go. But that's enough of me.
Not really, not just yet. I want you to tell me what, how much of our GDP we spend on non-communicable diseases.
Too much.
There you go. That's that, there, you know, our children.
And not only too much, but let's get real. The real underbelly, COVID has exposed all of our underbelly.
Yeah.
And the real underbelly in COVID is the chronic NCDs. And, and, and I want to break it down. And I want us to break down everything always. Because we're not speaking just to those who have finished university or whatever. We're speaking to each and every Beijan. So what we're talking about, heart, condition, pressure. We're on top of hypertension. You understand? Um, all of the other things that sugar, we're on top of diabetes. You know, that all of the things that we see have affected too many of our families. And a large part of it is because we're also not as active as we used to be. And, and I'm not saying it is easy. God knows it's not easy. You understand? But it has to be a daily, daily task in order for it to happen. So please.
So, I mean, languages, travel, all these things speak to quality of life, but so does health. How are we tackling that, Lizelle?
So now that we're all warmed up, what I will say is that I'm glad that we spoke about the GDP because what we found is that most countries with what you would call an unhealthy population plagued by NCDs usually have a fifteen percent contraction in their GDP. And for us, that means a worse quality of life across the board. So when our team had a look at NCDs, at first we were tasked with looking at obesity in children. And we realized that after diagnosing the problem, the issue wasn't just obesity in children. It was a systemic issue, and a systemic issue needed a systemic solution. And what we decided to do was try to have a bit more of an all-encompassing approach so that we could capture everyone and still target specific demographics that have been disproportionately affected by NCDs. So what we looked at first was of course the start of your healthy journey. What you put into your body, what you eat, how you treat your body. And we looked at the right to access healthy and affordable food. And we realized that that was an inalienable right that not everyone had. So we decided that we're gonna intervene first at agriculture to make healthy foods affordable. And that, of course, is a long journey, but not necessarily unachievable. So what our aim to do is to create local and indigenous products that are commercial and competitive. We aim to bring our producers in and make sure that their livelihoods are protected and expand the sector in that way. I won't belabor you with too many details, but from there, we moved on a bit. And we looked at the other components of health, activity, your interaction in school, what do you eat, how do you interact with your cafeteria? We, we tried our best to look at it from a cross-sectoral view. And we looked at the tech that could be applied because one thing we learned from COVID is that technology makes everything more accessible, regardless of your socioeconomic background. And that's what we aim to do. Make healthy lifestyles accessible to everyone. Regardless of what you bring home at the end of the month, you should be able to afford your basic food groups. And that includes heavy fruit, heavy vegetable that are locally grown and locally brought to you. So we moved on from that and we realized, well, okay, so if they're here, how do we access them in terms of they're in the grocery, why will people choose them? And we realized that there was a need for behavioral modification. We needed to understand that local is just as good as foreign, sometimes even better. So we decided that we were going to roll out an app that should be applicable first to children. They'll be our first set of beneficiaries. And the app is intended to teach them how to eat healthy through gamification, essentially just games. But not just games, because by the end of it, you will be able to do a proper food chart by, according to your nutritional needs when you go to the grocery, so that your health is now in your own hands. Now, health in your own hands, some people are probably wondering, well, what about doctors? What about nutrition? doctors, what about nutritionists, what about dietitians? We didn't forget about them. We decided that we are going to incorporate it with a co-management program so that you can be in the helm of your own health, but you can be paired with a doctor, a nutrition, a dietitian through this app so that you can manage your health because no one can impact your health in the way that you can. So in terms of that app, it'll be rolled out first for schools and we really hope to pair with Minister Bradshaw and roll it out among our schoolkids first because healthy eating is a habit and habits are formed young. So that was our first thing. The other thing is that we want to democratize our health records. What does that mean? It means that when your doctor writes your prescription, diagnoses you with a condition, it'll be broken down so that you can understand what's happening to your own health and your own body so that you can have a sense of agency and self-determination and control over what's happening to you and understanding so that what happens in the doctor's office and when you're advised to do better, eat better, try harder, work out more can translate to your everyday life in practical and implementable ways. Additionally, we understand that not everyone likes traditional medicine. I think COVID has certainly showed us that. But that doesn't mean that our alternative medicines, and when I say alternative, I mean the bush tea that your grandmother used to drink. We see that there are benefits to those things and we want to investigate this a bit more so that we can bring indigenous products home, so that we can keep our biodiversity, so that we don't have to fight with the antimicrobial crisis that we're facing currently. So Future Health is hoping to introduce systemic solutions to solve these systemic problems and make a healthy lifestyle accessible to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lizzo. I absolutely love how layered and multi-dimensional all of these solutions that the Future Barbados team leads are speaking to, you're exploring the entire value chain. And by virtue of coming with a very solution-oriented approach, you're creating opportunities that never existed before. And that's really what Future of Work is about.
Sure you do.
If I may say very quickly too, and I'm happy that Mark is here, CEO of BIDC, and so everybody knows him, we have a tender closing soon on advising consultancy on life sciences. And it is largely because when Mark and Jonathan did the research, they discovered, for example, that we have educated 6,000 people in the last five years in the area of sciences without creating as a country sufficient opportunity for you. And we hope that in this area, some of which you were talking about, especially with the research in our indigenous plants and fauna, I think that we can find and structure and put things on a better platform so that they can be more effective and we can be more effective in the use. Yesterday also, I met with the British Trade Commissioner and the British High Commissioner on the stuff that has been done. The British have signed a new trade agreement with us once they left the European Union. And one of the things we hope we can do with them and others is to be able to do far more scientific research. Today, Kay, Minister McConney, we spoke at cabinet about the establishment of a scientific research advisory council because we see this linked into the whole trajectory into life sciences. And the truth is that up to when our kids leave school and university, they are as good as anyone else. And here and after, it becomes about opportunity. So if we want to keep people here, then we've got to address the fact that you've got to bring the opportunities here and not just outside. In some instances, we have to create them. COVID has made it possible for us to see the full importance of the Besto Santos Lab, obviously. We are looking at other kinds of labs, we're looking at a living lab, we're looking at seeing how we can work with the private sector on things as exciting as eradication of Aedes Aegypti, on other types of things that we're doing. So there's a whole host of things that we would like to be able to see. So keep it up.
Yeah, don't move this yet, Lizzo.
Well, just before we move on, one thing that I did forget to mention that the Prime Minister did touch on is another area of research for us has been a biobank. And what that essentially is, is a repository of genetic information that in the Caribbean is actually quite useful to the rest of the world because we have several unique genetic indicators and it can really help in the development of alternative medicines and even traditional pharmacological medicines. So we really do hope that this is an area that we can explore further and it's something that can benefit every single citizen of Barbados and the wider region as well.
You've said hope, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it a little more forceful language and say that it is a direct ask. We happen to have the Minister of Innovation Science and Smart Technology here, who I think is perhaps gonna end up being one of your key stakeholders in this initiative. Minister McConney?
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm very happy to see the work that you're doing as part of Future Health in this regard. What is important and what I'm so excited to see is that you have linked health across the entire GAN, that it is not just about how we take care of ourselves from a medical perspective, but it's how we take care of ourselves from a nutritional perspective and that we are seeing that there's opportunity for innovation in that particular area, whether we are dealing with hydroponics or aeropodics or all of the other areas that are now emerging that will allow us to grow more food in a smaller space given Barbados' size and to do so far more efficiently with much less energy. And so that hits a number of the key important indicators for Barbados that we're going in the right direction from the energy, from the nutrition, from the volume that we would need in order to make ourselves sufficient in that regard. Now, when we speak of innovation and the work that is being done from an innovation perspective, I think that the life sciences is perhaps one of the biggest opportunities that we have to be able, because it not just allows us to solve problems for ourselves, but what we are learning, especially as a people with the demographics we have in Barbados, much of the science and the work that's being done in innovation around the world as it relates to health sciences and life sciences, does not necessarily speak to our demographic, the majority of our demographic. And so I believe that some of the learning that will come through the work we will do and the innovation we will do will help to feed the rest of the world in terms of their being able to collaborate with us and bring about the kinds of solutions that we will need that not only speaks for others in the world, but also speaks to people with the kinds of demographics that Barbados has. And while I have the chair, you spoke certainly to applications that are being used. I heard about applications being used for Future Safe, I've heard of the applications that are being used here. And I think that what is exciting about what you're doing here is that applications are not just for entertainment, it is applications that you are simply applying tech to life, applying technology to life in all of its many different phases. Now, what I would love to see is for greater opportunities created for you to collaborate with our ministry. Because what is true...
There are enough of them to go around.
And if I can be honest, government is not the best innovator in the world.
That's true.
That's honest.
The reality is that the world we're going to be living in has changed. It is a world where it is going, many things are going to be temporary. It is a world where many things are going to be mobile. It is a world where many of the solutions have to be global. And governments are not set up to be temporary, mobile and global. And therefore, the innovations that have to happen must come from the future of Barbados and the opportunity then for government to become a better partner. Because I've seen it in my own ministry where well-intentioned people with good ability also take longer to disrupt themselves. And therefore, the pace of change is not what it ought to be for Barbados to be where it needs to be. Because right now, it's not just a matter of being temporary, mobile and global, but we have to be able to move at a pace and collaborate at a level that allows us to gain progress and benefits that we need. And so I am trusted that the work that you're doing will help us not only to innovate, but to accelerate the pace once you partner with government and government finds the right models and structures that will allow your innovations and ideas to be imported into our public space.
Thank you so much, Santiago McConney. Lizzo, before you go, just a quick question, are you guys, do you guys have any focus on mental health, addressing mental health?
So we're collaborating with the Future Wellbeing Pillow to address mental health, but through the app, we do have plans for a monitoring application within it so that we can flag mental health challenges from early so that if it is you want to manage your mental health in terms of regular check-ins, journaling, et cetera, because we do believe that mental health is very much a part of your health and your wellbeing. So we will be partnering with Future Wellbeing to ensure that is something that's addressed.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's critical if we are honest about what the reality of the future holds. Mental health is said to be on track to be one of our greatest healthcare burdens going forward, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Santiago McConney, you said something about Barbados and needing to be a little, I'm paraphrasing here, but us needing to be more strategic, particularly as a small space. Small doesn't always have to be a disadvantage, yeah? And we're on topic of converting vulnerabilities to opportunities. We have no shortage of vulnerabilities as a small island developing state and we can't speak to being a small island developing state without speaking to the green and the blue sectors. We have Ms. Alyssa Gibbons and Dr. Shelly Anne Cox, who are co-leads on the Future Green and Future Blue pillars. Can you join us and help us to explore some of these new frontiers of opportunity and speak to some of the resources required to tap into those opportunities because we have the Minister for Maritime Affairs and Blue Economy here. So I think it would be, it would be very strategic to put in an ask.
Sure. Pleasant goodnight to everyone. It's a privilege to be here. We have been tasked really to explore the new wave of economic thought and of course refer to this as the blue economy. And I think it's important first to understand how blue economy and the climate-sensitive sectors that make up the blue economy straddle the other colored economies. We have the green, the black, the brown, the gray, and all of these economies really emphasize the point and the really need to explore why we need to have inter-sectoral collaboration to explore and solve some of the wicked problems we have in the blue economy. So with that background, we know that we have some traditional blue economy, job opportunities. Everybody is familiar with marine biologists, fisheries biologists, but know that we have deep-sea biologists, you know, right in Trinidad. There is the new discipline in marine meteorology as well. We have aquanauts, people who spend a day and so on, exploring the ecosystem under the water. And I think what really excites us is the opportunity for ocean premiership. There are so many opportunities as it relates to businesses like boat valet services, for example, we don't have that here in Barbados. There are no tackle and gear shops in Oystons and Spite Stone, for example. There are some people here exploring sarcasm uses, but of course, still at a very small scale. So there are many opportunities and I want to say that although some of these may be very highly specialized areas, there are examples, for instance, as it relates to Caribbean vocational qualifications. And recently, we've been working to launch a fishing vessels operations course in collaboration with the National Fisher Force Organization and the Coast Guard. And this will be an eight-week course where people can go through the course and be equipped with the skills and competencies to work on fishing vessels. And this is the kind of thing we envisage. We, our vision, we see a center of excellence in ocean sciences and maritime studies. It doesn't need to be a physical center, it could be across institutions, but essentially we want to equip persons and, you know, even with the synergies across our disciplines and pillars, equip persons coming from prison, for example, in some of these short courses that they could be valuable citizens and contribute to the blue economy. In terms of what we have been exploring for solutions, you know, the common thread, of course, is data, information, application of digital technologies. And of course, in our blue economy, we are in a place where it's data scarce. So we have been exploring the promise of artificial intelligence, the internet of things, as well as blockchain technology to address fragmented supply chains, even the promise as it relates to applications in mariculture. You know, we want to earmark sea eggs, for example, a very passion of mine as it relates to the sea egg fishery that we think would be a low-hanging fruit. And then we really want to dispel the myth that the sea has no back door. The back door really leads to the beauty of the sea, you know? And I'm really looking at a national swimming program that results in two or three competent persons swimming in each household. You know, we wanted to see one university graduate in each household, let us see three competent swimmers in each household. And, you know, building out what that swimming program looks like, I know we have started to implement something like that, but we have new ideas as it relates to and building out safety and first aid and really changing the way people think. And a big part of that is behavioral change, as my colleague was saying earlier, but you know, having those kinds of campaigns, you know, Zara from our group, and of course, we support her in painting the tongue blue and building out a really comprehensive communication strategy and plan for drawing the awareness of Barbadians to the importance of the blue economy and the potentials that they have. And of course, the future of work is blue, balanced learning and unconventional education. Thank you.
Ocean premiership, that is, I am, I am, I'm using that word going forward. As you spoke, I was reminded of a joint venture between the Ministry of Maritime Affairs and the Ministry of Youth Sports and Community Empowerment that dealt with teaching young Barbadians how to swim and combating that fear of the ocean that really doesn't serve us well, considering that we live on an island. I'm gonna go to Future Green before I allow the ministers to speak because I'm sure that there are a lot of synergies between green and blue. And all of this frankly relates to young people and community empowerment if we're discussing opportunities. So we're gonna come back to you ministers.
Hi. Goodnight, everyone. I'm representing, as you mentioned, Future Green. And we have been preoccupied with the ideas, obviously, of resilience, sustainable development and the environment and how we can create healthy environments for all citizens. And particularly within green is a very massive scope, but there are those synergies that start to pop up between blue, for example, or especially future health, where in a very water-scared nation, we have issues of not great access to water. So speaking specifically to some of those synergies that you mentioned, we've been identifying alternative sources of energy, for example, and exploring not just the push for 2030 renewable carbon-neutral society, but what next? What's after that? Say in 2050, all the airlines and cruise ships transition to hydrogen, are we placing ourselves in a position to make that transition then? So we're not just looking short-term, but we're looking medium and long-term and really forcing the issue and trying to identify those gaps, those opportunities where we can place ourselves, not just now, but in the future, for more economic activity and more jobs. Before we even get there, though, I mentioned 2030 and our push to be carbon-neutral by then is a fantastic ambition. We would be the first island state to achieve that, but how do we get there? And that's been our, our real motivation, setting those indicators and benchmarks for how do we actually get there? Say, for example, globally, two-thirds of the building stock that will exist in 2030 and 2050 is already built. So you're not just looking at new builds, for example, we need to be questioning, how do we transition our existing buildings? Having conversations with the Ministry of Education where we identify, is there perhaps overspending in the maintenance of buildings because we're not smart about how we're going about it? And I'm not saying smart in terms of a lack of intelligence, but we're not integrating those innovative technologies and solutions to be able to manage. And everyone in the group would probably say that, I say this a million times, you can't manage what you don't measure. And that's where the data comes in. That's absolutely where the data comes in. We need to be researching. We need to be researching, developing, identifying those gaps, and most importantly, closing them. You know, and as we look towards a future, we question, you know, what is the future of Barbados? I think for us, generally as a cohort, it is about that. Setting the groundwork for exploring opportunities for research, development, and in the kind of contentious context of recent days, moving towards the future with a sense of sovereignty, but in the form of self-reliance that is guided by that data, that is nuanced and tailored to who we are as a Barbadian people.
Thank you so much, Alyssa. Brilliant, brilliant. You said contentious, but I don't think you can get, you can get progress without some kind of disruption. So bring that, bring lots of it. So Minister Humphrey, in the words of Alyssa, what's next?
First of all, thank you very much. And it's fantastic to be here. This is for me, I think, a learning opportunity as well. It is interesting to be in a room where ideas are being thrown out and they're practical and easy to implement, almost bankable. It's also good to be in a room where, you know, you're not the only person saying, let's do this now. We need to do this now. You know, that's the, that's the. I work with Dr. Cox, so she knows already how I feel, like, we're taking too long. We need to do these things now. And so that is very encouraging. I must tell you that, a very quick story. When I became the Minister of Maritime Affairs and Blue Economy, I was in a room full of people. And the response at the end of it was, why did the Prime Minister do that to you? They said, they said, why, you worked so hard, you beat the Prime Minister, you did so well. Why did the Prime Minister do this to you? And I said to them, y'all just don't understand the gift that I was given. That I promise you, in a few months, years, you will appreciate the gift that is the blue economy and that the work that we can do together to really make something happen. I think regrettably, and I know Mark understands this, there's a large part of the Barbadian society that doesn't appreciate science, especially the older population. And they don't appreciate that some things that we were doing traditionally, we can no longer continue to do. I remember having a conversation with a fisherman and I said to him, you know, we're gonna make some changes. He said, but I've been doing this for the last 60 years, my father before me. And I said, that's why we can no longer do it now. You know, you just can't. There's just not enough fish. Everything has changed. We need to have a different approach. And even in speaking with Dr. Cox, because we work very closely together, even in speaking to Dr. Cox, when I was looking to do the marine managed areas, and Barbados is going to implement two areas very soon. One on the west coast, one on the south coast, that are going to be marine managed. It's gonna be, they're gonna treat differently to how people operate in that space. There's gonna be some areas where it'll be no fishing and so on. But we had a conversation with the Sainet fishermen. And the Sainet fishermen is a, is a big portion of Barbadian society. And they understood when we spoke, because we had a meeting, and they understood that the things that they were doing traditionally, you know, they could no longer continue to do. I had a view that I wanted to do more. I know it wasn't shared. But I wanted to do more because I feel there's this sense on us now to really protect what has happened. And I take your point that in many ways, we cannot make necessary changes without some disturbing. You know, there's gotta be a period of some disequilibrium. And I think when the disequilibrium comes, it's persons in the sector and the stakeholders, really some things cannot deal with it. And it manifests itself in ways that are vicious, crude comments, you know, and so on.
Think we could draw some parallels from that.
Absolutely. So I went, I went recently, we showed, and I'm making a point out in response to Dr. Cox. But I went recently to the cinema, we showed A Life on Our Planet by David Attenborough. And at the end of it, when I was about to leave, this young lady, about eight years old, she came up to me and she said, I want to thank you for what you're doing for Barbados. And it was at a time for me, I mean, we're politicians, but we're also humans. It was at a time for me where I felt like my message just wasn't getting through to anybody because of the pushback on the marine and the plastics and so on. She said, no, you keep on doing what you're doing. This beautiful, bright, young, eight-year-old girl or so. And so I figured that young people get it. And that the partnerships that we must create must be with young people to be able to do the work that we need to do. Now, in, in fishing, for example, we, we have already started doing a lot of the training. I want to bring more, as you know, I want to bring more people to be trained. I want to make it easier. I do not think we need necessarily to have, at the end of the day, a certificate. I do not think that we need necessarily to have a degree. But I think people wants to get exposed to it. And to me, it is about that exposure. I've already said as well that I don't know that we need to teach at a very early age, blue economy. We need to teach people to understand and appreciate the ocean. And, and then they get it. But you don't, you don't teach, we don't teach trigonometry in primary school. But we teach, you know, basic understanding of math and so on. Eventually, they get it. And we teach it in bigger pieces. That is why we did simple things. I remember when I wanted to teach the swimming program and I brought it to the Prime Minister. I had, at the time I said, PM, we're gonna do it with Minister Sutherland and Minister King. I had, I wanted to teach 50 people just to be safe. Young people to swim, start small and work it out. The Prime Minister said, it's a good program, but it doesn't work for me. And what do you mean? The Prime Minister said, if you want to do this program, Kirk, it has to be a lot bigger than what you were doing. So I went back and we came back and we did a thousand people. Last year, this year, we were gonna do 1,500 people, of course, with COVID. We're also doing the same thing, implementing the same program through the school. So eventually, we're going to get there. But I think if we go past that and look at some of the bigger areas in blue economy, what are some of those opportunities? Our maritime space, as you know, is 424 times the size of our land space. And I say to people, that is 424 times the opportunity that we have before us. If you look at, and I think the brilliance of the ministry is that we, we brought together some existing departments that really were never the focus. So for example, shipping was with tourism, but nothing was happening in shipping. So that the legislation in shipping is so antiquated, it's so old, that it could never be able to satisfy a modern Barbados that is serious about maritime. And therefore, we have no modernizing all the legislation. And when I look at the legislation, I started writing down in every area, maritime, fisheries, the port, ocean energy, which we had a wonderful conversation this morning, all of the potential jobs. I'm telling you, there are thousands of potential opportunities. We just started listing them. And these things are relevant to some of the legislation. So to be able to effectively manage our ship registry, for example, which is a practical example, to be able to effectively manage that, we have created about 12 to 15 easy jobs, just there. The same thing is happening when we discussed this morning about wave energy. The potential for Barbados to be able to use the ocean and leapfrog a number of persons in, not necessarily inexpensive, but affordable, clean energy. We discussed the same thing in the port. I see the Minister of Tourism, former Chairman of Work. Good night, Minister Cummins. We discussed in the port, being able to provide hydrogen energy to the ships even before it became so cool. And so the port is now building out in a way to be able to afford, to offer hydrogen energy as well. And then you spoke of the need for us to be able to have like a valet service for ships in a new port plan. There's going to be a massive area where we haul out vessels, we offer those services to the vessels and so on. So those are a whole set of jobs. We're gonna be able to do the boat repair there. We're gonna be able to do the valet there. Currently, a lot of ships just sail us by because we don't have that. And that's another area where we felt like this ministry is brilliant because they were, these things were just overlooked. And now we're being able to bring focus to a number of these things. So there's a lot of opportunity. There's a lot of potential. There is a lot of possibility. I think the one challenge that we may have, as I close, is that. And the Prime Minister used the word earlier, and it's, it's about being curious. It's just about curiosity and being driven by the idea that, you know, things are different, are not necessarily bad. You know, not only in maritime, just in life. Things that are different are not necessarily bad. We frown or we shut down when we engage something that is a little bit different. We should become alive and become more curious. I recall when we go to meetings, we're told, don't sit together in the same group. You know, don't sit in the same group. Go around, spread, you know. We can't all just sit together. Go and sit with other people, learn something. The Prime Minister's favorite word, go sit with other people. And, and that's the way that you learn. And I just feel like that is where we are. So that in maritime, there are going to be new jobs, but I don't want people to shy away from it. I have a degree in management. And the, you know, every year, the social sciences, producing people, producing people, producing people. People are drawn to the idea of doing that which other people have done. We gotta become curious and do the things that nobody yet is doing. And in some cases, we may need to be completely innovative. And in some cases, as you did with your app, just build on what's there. So I, I think there are many opportunities in, in the blue economy, certainly, many of which we are building upon. And I look forward to being able, I see everybody's trying to steal this bunch. But I look forward, Mark, to you bringing them to see me too, so that we could build off on this conversation. Thank you very much.
A lot more, how many applications did we have, Jonathan? Over 200? Over 400 applications. So if you feel this is it. There are actually layers and layers and layers and layers more of people. And I was told that it was one of the most difficult decisions to be able to peer down to get you here. So well done to you here, but we need now to expand to bring the others in as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, PM. Curiosity. There is one more frontier of opportunity that we haven't touched on yet, and that is the digital economy. And quite appropriately, we have Sebastian Hunt joining us on Zoom. Hi, Sebastian. Not hearing you. Oh, yeah. We got you here now. Hi. Sebastian, I want to pose the same, the same question I posed Shelly Anne and Alyssa earlier. What are the opportunities to be found in the digital sector? And what are the resources required to tap into those opportunities?
Yeah, that's a interesting question. So first, I'll introduce my role a little bit, which is as tech architect. So I've actually helped develop tech concepts across different groups. So instead of going into specific app ideas that I think may be beneficial or specific to technology even, I kind of wanna get a broad sort of public basis, which was a big trust and citizen foundation, if you will call. And I think honestly, it's been touched on a few times, right? Like this idea for value data and making sure that our decisions are data-driven. So when addressing the idea of the opportunities that the digital sector provides for youth, I think it's fair to start at a simple question of what do the, do the youth really want, right? Um, do we have, do we have? Do we have the, the tools necessary to be able to sample, to be able to understand what their interests are, right? Do we, and, and I think that speaks across the end of governance and has started already, which is digitizing their services and their processes to lead to better database analysis. So that in, in the backend, by combining all of the information that we have, whether that's surveys as well as any interaction with government services, we can build a picture and understand what is people want, right? Until we can answer that question, it's very difficult to pick out any given sector and say that this is gonna lead to youth employment. So, so I think number one would be to start at a government level where we, where we look to push forward digitization, which in turn saves money and then leads the opportunity for more human-centered approaches to be, to come back towards the youth. And then I think more specifically, I guess, there are two broad areas where the digital sector could be beneficial. The first is kind of taking advantage of already existing infrastructure and data and digital technologies. So social media, and YouTube have transformed communications and media landscape in general. And it's suddenly become possible for anyone, anywhere to communicate and develop a brand and project an image in the world. And so I think we need to empower our youth to be able to take advantage of some of these opportunities. And so I'm gonna probably call up a couple of institutions directly. But for example, we can talk about digital payments and the lack of support for that from banks, right? Like when we think about an e-commerce industry or, or a dropshipping, digital marketing, these are all areas that Barbadians and, and young Barbadians are naturally inclined towards, but we can't really take advantage of because we don't really have the digital payments infrastructure. And I think that if we are going to, I think one of the spirit of the charter is exactly challenging some of these institutions to live up to what they, they owe a modern Barbadian. And so one good example is banks. And I think if they don't, it segues into a secondary area where there's tremendous opportunity for youth, which is just disrupting the status quo, right? So if, if a bank doesn't want to provide the services that are necessary for a modern Beijing, then we should, we should just replace it with an online bank, right? We have apps and digital payment providers that can come in and put pressure on them to be constantly innovative. And so I think the second opportunity is more generally developing a tech sector in the island, right? One that is driven by youth and driven by ideas of inclusivity and, and the idea that we can't kind of do this alone, but we do need to lean on expertise. And hopefully, in so doing, create a Barbados that is, that, that is appealing not to just visit for a couple of weeks, but you know, the best and brightest and most talented people in the world are looking to develop a life and a career here. And I think that a tech sector provides that opportunity. They, one of the, obviously, the primary limitations of Barbados is the size. And I think digital, the digital sector is unique among many of the emerging markets where that isn't, that isn't an inherent limitation to scalability. So we can scale businesses that are regionally focused, that are internationally focused, and take advantage of some of the unique characteristics of Barbados being that a lot of tech isn't geared towards, say, small island developing states. And they're not geared towards South-South collaboration or trade. And so there are a lot of these areas of opportunity where we can empower agents to actually take, 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 take the bull by the horns, so to speak, and approach and develop new ideas and, and produce SaaS outputs that in turn create opportunities for, for new jobs, for, and, and show the next generation of Barbadians that there are, there is a way to develop, not just a competitive salary in Barbados, but an internationally competitive salary and a place where they can really pursue their careers. But I think, again, the resources that are necessary for that come from government in terms of the correct regulatory framework to provide support for some of these ideas and, and protect them as they grow. I think it comes from in traditional private sector investors being willing to gamble on young Barbadian businesses and on young intelligent agents. And it, and it requires traditional institutions to be accepting of the fact that we are not alone in the world and that we have to be inclusive to all, or we're not gonna have the ability to attract some of the talent that I think is necessary in order to propel Barbados into being what I hope it could be, which is a regional hub for tech in, in the Caribbean. And one that, and finally, develop an industry that is inherently scalable and inherently internationally focused.
Thank you so much, Sebastian. That was excellent. I mean, there, there are two key things that you have to mention when you're talking about the future. That's digital and the other one is youth. You can't have any conversation about the future without talking about youth. I think it's only fair that I give Minister Sutherland an opportunity to say how he too is going to try to snatch up some of these cohorts and partner with future Barbados pillars. Minister Sutherland?
Okay, thank you, Sharita. It's indeed a privilege to be here, interacting with what I would term the movers-shakers for the next generation. Every day, I go to work in the, in that lovely Ministry of Youth Sports and Community Empowerment. And my question to myself and to my staff, how are we going to create opportunities for the 60,000 young people in this country? Listening to you tonight, some of the areas, job enrichment, lead, you spoke about civility. You spoke about the youth economy. Some of our challenges, though, relate to scale. We do things well on a small scale. And I recognize this is not a criticism of government. We cannot do it alone as a ministry. We need to partner with you, Future of Barbados. And I feel jealous tonight to know that.
You have no competition.
Very, very jealous, I feel, because the future is really the youth. And I'm saying it with the view that I'm reaching out to you, begging you for assistance as well. Mr. Hill and Mr. Reed, they know very well that we have looked at a restructuring exercise because we recognize that we are not capturing the youth in its totality. We are not providing the opportunities that we ought to for the 60,000 young people in this country. Every year, we have some 4,000 school leavers. We have a school leaver trace, a study that I would like to share with future Barbados. And we look, we take a holistic approach for providing opportunities for these young people. We partner with the Ministry of Education. We partner with the blue economy. We partner with diverse ministries, energy. I think Mr. Hill and I looked at utilizing our community centers because we are cramped with space. Um, Samuel Chapman Prescott Institution and the Bar- Barbados Vocational Training Board, we have limited capacity through which we can engage our young people and, and give them the necessary opportunities, utilizing the various frontiers that we spoke about tonight. So I am pleased to know that we have good support and, um, future Barbados. I, I will say that Barbados' future is in good hands. And I look forward to the opportunities for engaging with, engaging each and every one of you on the various pillars, whether it is civility, recidivism, the youth economy. Because our hope as a government and our future as a government lies with the young people. And we have to provide the opportunity for them to soar and to become true global citizens. Gone are the days when we say to people, the young people, that you must be seen and not heard. And, and I think from generations before, that's why we, we have stereotyped the young people, pigeonhole them and put them in a cub whereby they're not allowed to express themselves. And back then, not this government, no, I don't think the previous government. I'm not getting into governments with respect to politics, but even within some of the homes, when a young person begin to, you know, make a comment, when a parent says, says to the young one, "Oh, um, you must do X," and the child offered an opinion, you were heard, you will hear, "You're too young, shut up." And I think we have to move away from that in our society. And I think now is the time, the transformational process has started. Our charter speaks to building a strong and cohesive Barbados where we can empower and enfranchise all of our citizens. So I, I'm indeed blown aware this afternoon, and I look forward to the opportunity for engaging each and every one of you within Future Barbados and outside of Future Barbados. Um, because our aim, basically, we take the young students after school. And the Ministry of Youth, we classify young people within that ministry from age sixteen to thirty-five. And, and if you look at our, most of the challenges in our country, the crime rate is not that high as compared to Caribbean territories, but other Caribbean territories. But we are not satisfied with the crime rate and we are not satisfied with the fact that every time we look in our paper and we look at the prison enrollment, we are seeing eighty-five percent of our young people involved. So we have a lot of work to do. As a government, we have started the journey. And I will end by saying, I look forward to cooperating with you on this journey to make Barbados the best place to live, work, do business and raise a family.
Thank you, Minister, for that. Um, so I, as we have explored all of these, these future pillars of opportunity, um, and the future of work, I think we can begin to appreciate the charter as the benchmark of progress as it was intended to be. Um, it's a broad and ambitious vision, um, but it really challenges us in our respective roles to give life to the works. Now, um, Prime Minister and Ministers, I am told that Beijing Twitter is loving the contributions from the cohort of Future Barbados, but they want to know, are these genuine commitments to help them take these brilliant ideas to reality? Are you making commitments to partner with them going forward? That, that, that's the question.
In the estimates, you get so far, Jonathan? What?
In the estimates, we'll call about three million so far, I think.
Okay.
I cannot speak. It's just enough.
A government puts, um, it's money where it's mouth is. And, and look, I'm closer to the end of my career than I was to the beginning. I came in, I, your father, Sanjay, was one of the ones, in fact, because of your father, I bought my house. Look, I tell him, "All these people out here run, run," and, and they don't own a house. And I said, "Oh, shoot, let me go buy a house." And I had to struggle to save then, had to get a mortgage. And, and I can tell these stories because everybody thinks you start up here. The first year in my house, I slept on a piece of sponge on the ground because I didn't have the money to buy the bed that I wanted to buy. And I wasn't going to my parents for the money. The next time I moved house, I didn't have the money to buy the stove that I wanted. So I used a tuber and a hot plate for six months. And anybody who knows or came to my house would tell you that too. So, um, I wanted to say those things, but the promotion of trust is the most important thing we must do as a government, as adults, as leaders. And if you don't remember anything else I've said tonight, remember that trust is absolutely critical. Because trust is what gives you the benefit of the doubt when you fall or stoop. And every one of us will fall or stoop at some point. And trust is what is exponentially capable of increasing. Because if somebody trusts you, Marshall, the phrase that I use all the time that you don't like, you understand? But I grew up in a Barbados where three words determine the extent to which a person would go to the ends of the earth for you. And when a Beijing on the ground tell you, "We is we," what are they really telling you? That the trust between us is almost unbreakable. So when I say to you that this program is not a political program or it's not a whatever, this is about nation building. And this is about recognizing that for too much of our modern history, especially the last thirty years, we have been operating on fumes in different sectors. Maybe some sectors only the last ten, some the last twenty, some the last twenty-five, some the last five. But when you look at it, there's just too much of us riding on past glory rather than creating a platform for future prosperity and stability. Barbadians must earn their living, Barbadian's voices must ri- rise and rank above, and they are equally valid globally. I'd like to see us influencing, not just at the level of those of us in government, but at your level. What's happening globally in terms of so many other things? And that's why maintain, you cannot secure our future without us producing global citizens with Beijing roots. Now, what does that mean? That we've got to change the culture and changing the culture is difficult, but it's not impossible. There was a time in this country where you played banjo music on a Sunday.
It's true. Banjo, yeah, write down banjo.
And banjo music was anything that was not holy music, sacred music, okay? So much so that in my father's time, and when I first came to public life, I was twenty-three, twenty-four on a Sunday night, and Billy Miller, the entertainment for politicians was to go to a singing. You know what a singing is?
No.
How many people know what a singing is?
None of us.
That means, that means, Sanjay, that you ain't doing is gonna drop there for it. You gotta put all this in the curriculum. A singing is a hymn singing. Gabby and others would be horrified to know that currently in your constituency and in the city of British, um, Marshall, your singings galore used to take place. But a singing was an excuse for men to get together after even song, uh, women, after even song, and go and sing hymns, but they're buying liquor still to, uh, eat the fish cakes and other things. So the society has evolved, the culture has evolved. And, and only today we talked about the need, Sanjay, remember, to deal with landship. And how do we modernize the Barbados landship? How many people in this audience know that the Barbados landship is the oldest service club we have in this country? You hear about Kiwanis, you hear about J.C., you hear about all of them. They come from some small town in North America, but landship come from, look, cross there so, cross there so. And it was the landship operating not as the cultural representation of dance and drums as we know it, but it was what kept families together, it was what did the susu or the meet and turn or whatever. It was the one thing that families that didn't have access to anything else use this as a support, as a friendly society, as everything. Now, are we going to let it die? When I was Minister of Education, I brought it back and we had a program called the checks program in schools. And some of your older brothers or sisters may have been able to tell you about it. In fact, some of these people who are ministers may well have known about the checks program when we first started it.
I don't even know it, though.
Huh?
I wish I did, but I don't, sorry.
Right? But, but we need to bring it back. And all I'm saying is, is that we got some things that can root us. And we need to be able to have the combination of trust and authenticity. We get those two things together, the, 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 the world is our oyster, swear to God. So, no, this is not a joke. And I commit my life, not my job, but my life to continuing to work with young Barbadians to build out future Barbados. You see down there, where there? Had it not been for COVID, we had already started to talk about doing some fundraising concerts for young people down there, but all acoustic, you understand? Thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand people and, and bringing them in. And I hope that as we get into the safe zones and the other things, that we can start that up so that you bring, for example, a Jesse Royal who just got nominated for a Grammy yesterday. You understand, who's a good friend, Anatania Stevens. And you say, "Look, I ain't bringing him in a band." You get guitar, you get some bongos or congos and you can play. Or you have maybe one acoustic piano and drums and let's do it. I put some flambo's down there and let's get people. She doing that because she's playing guitar too.
What does, what does, what do you do?
So you have a cabinet that is very much, and Kurt is a performance artist. And, 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 and these are doing things too. So the interest is there. And whatever, K, K is a gold medalist at Carifto. You understand? So believe you me, everyone has a history, everyone got a future. But these are the things that matter. And if we don't reach out and hold and nurture, and Marshall said something earlier which resonated with me greatly. We teach our people and our children so many other things, but we don't teach them how to relate to each other in terms of across gender. And, 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 and it is important because in the same Tanya Stevens song, one of the greatest songs she has written, in my view, is a song called "Do You Still Care?" And that actually is acoustic, too. Look for the YouTube version of it. I gave a speech on it in Trinidad, premise with just that song. And listen to it because one of the lines says to the boy, "Yeah, boy, boys don't cry." What madness that is. I miss what madness that is. Boys don't cry? Boys is crying, men is crying. And, 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 and this notion, this notion that we impose that then, then leads to mental stress and all kinds of mental offset, then is what puts pressure on our young people because we're not allowing them to be who they need to be. And, and look, let me talk, man. When the charter came up, all the charter seeks to do is to give everybody the fairest chance in this country. I would not know how to associate myself with discrimination of any form in a country that was the place that most historians will tell you was the country that was the site for the first genocide in the Americas. Today, Ralph Gonzalez called me to tell me that he was sending me a letter, a letter to Mia from Ralph. And it will probably be published, a nineteen-page letter on this journey to a republic, and I thank Ralph dearly for it. How many of you know that when the Spanish were coming in and out of here and the Portuguese, that the Belgians, Caribs had to run to St. Vincent? They left their stuff here. I would not know how to want to discriminate against anybody in a country that passed the sixteen sixty-one slave code that became the model across the Americas for the oppression and decimation of slaves. I would not know how to discriminate against anybody in this country. In a country where if you, Rashana, seventy, eighty years ago got married, you would have to leave the public service of Barbados and retire. Or if you, Doc, got pregnant, you would have to leave the public service and retire simply because you were a woman who has gotten married or who became pregnant. I would not know how to discriminate in a country that prevented people before Grantley Adams passed the right to vote for people in nineteen fifty irrespective of property. And, and these are the things that we need to understand. Is it going to be easy? Absolutely not. And that's why I tell you it's the difference between leadership and management. It wasn't easy when people wanted to abolish slavery. There was opposition. It took decades. It wasn't easy when women wanted the right to vote. It took centuries. It wasn't easy when Mr. Bauer wanted to go to independence. And even people in my party had a difficulty with it. But all great events come with difficulty. Growth comes with pain. That's why they call it about growing pains. So I hope, my friends, and, and I'm very conscious that you are just but a microcosm of the people in this country. But I hope that you understand your responsibility also to help us be able to create that kind of country and society where everyone is given a fair chance. And in the words of Bob, where there are no second-class citizens, go and listen to war, the lyrics of war again, and understand the essence of what it is we're trying to fight for. And as Martin Luther King said many times, "I may not make the whole journey with you." As the Talmud says, "We are not expected to complete the journey, but neither are we at liberty to resile from it." But what I will do is make sure that we run our leg. And in running our leg, we're looking back to make sure that you are there close enough to take the baton. And that's why we are investing in Future Barbados, because we're not waiting for it to happen by serendipity. We want you already in the box, ready and waiting so that when the baton can be passed or when we need you to come in and stand there for a leg for somebody, you're in a position to do it. And the only way to do it is by doing this. I've been lucky. I came into public life at twenty-three. That's when I decided to run. I became a senator. I ran in my first election at twenty-five, lost by a hundred and eighty-eight votes. And the next day after losing, I was back in the constituency. I became a senator then and eventually a minister at twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So that I would not know how not to do what I'm doing. And for me, not to do it would be the most dishonest act of my life. And therefore, when I ask my colleagues here, who are not as young as you anymore.
I am.
But when I ask them to serve, it is because I understood then that I had to start bridging the gap. And when we ask you now to come into Future Barbados, it is because we understand that if your contemporaries don't want to live in this country, then we have a bigger problem than we think we have.
Absolutely. Um, Minister Caddo, I, I saw you sitting up. Particularly when PM said you don't like the phrase "we is we." Um, let me let you defend yourself.
I appreciate that. Um, no, I, I was thinking about your question, Sharita, about whether there's political will for this work to go forward. And the, the answer is so clear to me because this work is the work. This work is the work. In twenty seventeen, I gave the Grantley Adams Memorial Lecture. Um, I think the title was "Why is No or Never for a New Development Model in Barbados?" And one of the parts of that development model that I outlined was the need for a mechanism just like this. I said, "Put some young people in a room with the main challenges that Barbados has and give them a few weeks, a couple of months, and they will come up with the answers." That was the development model that I outlined then. And I don't want, want to make any of my colleagues nervous. But as we, as you asked the question, I was thinking that these folks here could come and sit here and they could move. These folks here could come and be the leadership because that's what you're doing. When you ask the question about what is leadership versus management, leadership is really operating with the integrity to inspire. That's what y'all are, are, are doing. Y'all are, are, are doing the work focused on practical solutions. And it is able to inspire, it doesn't have to be two hundred and eighty thousand people, but inspire people to pick it up and take it forward. And so the answer is so obvious to me about whether there is political will here for this work because this is the work. You know, I, I, I wish that I had another ten hours with each of the pillars here. I listened to Sebastian talk about the payment system. Um, I listened to the, to the, um, yes, it, it, it is, um, the legislation passed. And as you know, Sebastian, we have to do a lot of the fine work to make sure because these things, you know, you, you launch something, it has bugs, Minister McConney will tell you. Um, but the work of disruption, to be able to replace banks if, if and where needed, all of that work is going on. And that's why I'm saying that the work that And that's why I'm saying that the work that you're doing is the work. You know, we have the Enterprise Growth Fund Limited, which is now having to pivot to become what y'all need. Because quite frankly, it's not now. And we're doing that work with a couple of young people as well, who are leading that transformation along with the management of EGFL. When we talk about the, the green economy and the blue economy and resilience, you know, we just left Glasgow, where, you know, Sharida was telling me about it before we started. Small island states were the leadership because we had the moral authority to be able to say, this cannot go on. And that's why we were listened to and because we went there demonstrating the tools that we need to survive and the things that we're prepared to do to make that happen. Seventy percent reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by twenty thirty. Nobody else in the world is doing that. Little Barbados is doing that. And a lot of the ideas that you talked about are going to help us get there. But friends, this, this is the work. I am so inspired. I was feeling a little tired. But I'm tired no more. And I, and I can't wait to take it forward.
Thank you, Minister Caddo. I want to open the floor to anyone. There are mics on either side. If you want to make a contribution, now is the time. Senator Lisa Cummins. Hi, welcome. I'm sorry I didn't acknowledge you earlier because you sneaked in. It's a hard to back.
Fairness, I left her upstairs about a minute and a half for me when I came down, so I explained.
Senator Cummins, would you like to kick off this open floor and answer this question for me? How do we as Barbadians give life to the words of the Charter? And what is it that we risk by not taking up that challenge? No pressure.
I was just saying the same thing, no pressure to Amber. So thanks for being here. I think like Marsha, I, I too am inspired. I, I sat here and I listened to all of the presentations. And I have to say that I know many of you, but I want to put Alyssa on, on blast because Alyssa is my architect. When I did a renovation on my home a few years ago, Alyssa was the person who did it. So I am practicing what we preach. So, you know, I think in terms of the Charter, we have to... I said it yesterday in the Senate and I'll say it again. There's been a very narrow conversation publicly around the, the contents of the Charter. There are five amazing articles with a lot of substance that affect all of our day-to-day lives. And the narrow conversation has been around two elements. And they're important elements, but there's so much more to the Charter. So what is necessary for us to be able to take it forward and to impact our lives? I think this is a big part of it. The future of work, getting young people who are involved and who understand where we've been because they've heard about it. I mean, Prime Minister, I have to confess, I didn't know some of those things either. I didn't know what a sing on was, a evening song was.
Everybody trying to defend the youth now.
I didn't know myself. But the point is that if we understand where we've come from, the challenges that we're facing now, and ultimately where we need to go, what is the future of Barbados? What do we want to see? What do we want to look like? What do we want our children to inherit? What do we want our children to be able to be a part of? And, and I think when, when we talked about that curiosity, people being able to see what is contained within that Charter, what does equitable development mean like, mean? And how does it treat to the questions that you raise of inclusive growth? Where people feel as though they have a stake. But also more importantly, that all of the segments, like the blue economy, the green economy, digitalization, youth, entrepreneurship, ocean... Shaliana, I loved the, the term ocean entrepreneurship. Those are the kinds of things.
Oceanpreneurship.
Oceanpreneurship. I loved it. I'd never heard that before, but I loved it. But the point of the matter is when we're talking about these kinds of innovations, these kind of initiatives, and we match it back to the Charter, it's aspirational, it's inspirational, it's ambitious, and it takes us into our future. So in twenty years, when we look back at where we were today, where we stood today and where we're going to go over the next couple of days, every last one of you have to be able to say, this is the installation that I paid forward into that future generation. All of us are standing on the shoulders of those who came before. I like to use a term called institutional scaffolding. We're standing here on those who came before us. You are going to use instruments like the Charter and all the work you're doing here to lay a foundation for those who come before you. And I'm looking forward to being able to look back, looking back to see what you've done because I think that is going to be pretty amazing.
So I extend the invitation again.
Everyone, it is a real pleasure to see everyone face to face and not just on Zoom. Yeah, it was, it was a good experience being part of the interviewing process and seeing many of you now engaging in your projects and activities. And I want to let you know that we're here to support, we're here to help however you need. But one of the things I want to score about the Charter is that for me, the Charter really underscored being a creative citizen under the Creator. Yeah, and I want to commend the government for the creative aspect because that's critical. I'm not only an industrial designer, but I'm also a theologian. And I want to commend the government that the Charter is founded on good theology. That in a sense, God created the heavens and the earth, and we are created in His image and likeness. And what that lends itself to is that we must be creative. And what we see coming from our youth is that creativity. So the Charter really is charting a course for us to become problem solvers and to deal with the big things that we have to deal with as citizens as far as the future is concerned. So therefore, the spirit of the Char-, of the Charter is really about how does it unlock our creativity? But more so, how do we create new expressions of life as well? Yeah? I have this saying, Barbados is life. And that's what Barbados really underscored for me is authentic. You know, you can live here, it has a fantastic pace. And, 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 and it's really about how do we continue to add value to life every single day? And that's what we get up every day to go and do when we go to work. Life to our youth, life to our environment, life to our oceans, life to our elderly, really transmitting life in every single thing we'll be doing going forward. You know, when I came back to Barbados after I completed my scholarship in industrial design, I took my portfolio to a company, I don't know if a lot of you know it, called BS&amp;T. And one of the directors, they said, you don't belong to Barbados, you need to go to Taiwan. Barbados is not ready for this type of innovation and it would never happen. And I said to myself, listen, my country is worth the same investment in innovation, in design, in development, that all these other big... And I stood here and I stood in Barbados and I battled out. You know, and one of the temptations very often is to jump on a plane and to brand drain your country, even after it has invested in you because we, we have an environment where when it comes to risks, there, there's folks who, when it comes to spending capital on research and development, get a little nervous. Yeah? But what, what I want to encourage you within the context of the Charter is that there's ways to create your way around those roadblocks so that you could bring to bear the innovations, bring to bear the ideas, bring to bear the thoughts that you want to see your country built on. So I want to encourage every one of you, you know, Barbados is life. So on the nine pillars, you know, the scriptures say that wisdom is built on nine pillars. And it was amazing to see, don't they say they've got nine pillars? You know? Let's, let's build a really solid, solid future for this island because the generations that are coming behind you deserve it. So we really want to commend you, want to commend the government on this Charter. And let's keep charting course. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr Phil. Rashana, Mr Trum, hi.
Hi, good night, everyone. And I just, I just wanted to say something. I listened to the debate on Wednesday and there were so many things that came out. And I was also tweeting as well at the same time, I read any interactions. And a lot of young people, based on social media, we believe in what the Char-, the Charter says. It is inspirational, it is aspirational. It declares what we want to be as a country. It declares how we are willing to take every Barbadian along because every Barbadian matters, every hand is important, every idea is valued. And there's been a lot of frustration over the last few years. And it's been, in the last two years particularly, well, yeah, two years, counting twenty twenty because of Covid and what it has meant, the stagnation, the feeling as though you can't achieve the things that you have set out to achieve. But for young people, in many ways, we feel as if nothing has been designed for us and we are being left where we are. And so to me, the Charter symbolizes a commitment and a promise that we are taking everyone along with us. It doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter your sexuality or where you were born. And, but the future of Barbados to me, particularly tonight, is tangible, a bit more tangible, because it puts into action the things that we say in the Charter. It says that every Barbadian has the right to equality of life that allows for them to work and to thrive. It says that we recognize that we cannot live on a planet that does not exist and we have to do our part to safeguard it. It says that in order to step into the twenty-first century and truly step into the twenty-first century, we have to embrace technology, we have to embrace languages and moving. We have to recognize that instead of building our houses away from the sea, we need to build them to face it. And we have to do that while being conscious of everything that is happening around us. And so I am excited to see the outputs from all the young people who are involved in future Barbados. I am excited to benefit from those outputs, to be engaged by those outputs. And I look forward to what is to come. I think this is a great initiative. And congratulations to each and every person that is involved because in order for us to move from where we are now to where we aspire to be, we cannot as young people sit on the sidelines or stand on the sidelines and clap, but we have to be active partners and co-conspirators and, and managers and all of those different things in order to get it done. And if the government is committed to that, and Prime Minister has said that they already ministers have expressed how excited they are to partner, then the young people are here and we have shown up. And I assume, and I hope, and I know, sorry, that they're going to show out. So I look forward to what is to come.
Thank you. Pierre, is that Pierre?
Yeah.
You're sitting? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
When we speak about the future of work, we speak about the work improving for the better. We speak about workplaces embracing digital skills. We speak about work being accessible to every person, everyone, inclusive of persons with disabilities. Earlier today, the Honorable Prime Minister mentioned that in a few years' time, the workforce will be a lot smaller. And this only emphasizes the great need for us to ensure that every single person has equal access to work. This is one of the reasons why I am extremely excited about this Republic Charter because it speaks about equality regardless of ability. And this speaks to me and tells us that regardless of our disabilities, we are equal in this society. However, this is just a preliminary step as a lot of legislative reform still has to be done to ensure that equality is protected and enforced, that we all have an equal right to inclusive, equal education and equal access to workplaces because too many disabled persons are falling through the cracks. Too many disabled persons are segregated. We as a state, we have signed on to the United Nations Convention of Persons, Rights of Persons with Disabilities. However, unfortunately, we still haven't, well, we have ratified it. We still haven't incorporated it into our legislation, which doesn't give us the necessary legislative force that we would like to show that we are still protected, that we have the equal right to that mainstream education, to show that we can have an equal chance on the job market. And we can only imagine what we are missing out on. The ideas that we are missing out on as a country, the skills, the talents that we are missing out on because there are persons out there that don't have the access, the ability to contribute to the country, the ability to contribute to a country, that contribution that may have an enormous positive impact on Barbados and take us in a completely different direction. So when we speak about future of work, we speak about access to all persons. All persons, including persons with disabilities, access to the educational system, access to training in the job force, access to lifelong learning to ensure that all persons are employable and all persons have an equal chance on the job market. Thank you.
And, and before you go, you didn't introduce yourself, you're trying to be undercover. Janil Aldo, everyone, the Accessibility Advisor to Future Barbados. Thank you so much for that contribution.
Thank you.
Prime Minister, you wanted to respond?
Very quickly for you, ma'am. And this is the second time I've heard you speak and thank you for your advocacy. There are two commissions that are, have been affected a little bit by Covid and I hope that both of them will start. One is the one chaired by, on parliamentary reform by Sir Richard Sheltonham. And the other one will be the one on persons and the conditions under which persons with different ability live in this country. And I've asked Mr Eddie Hinkson, who as you know, has a passion for this area, to be the lead to do that as well. So I hope that next year, we'll be able by the middle of the year to get back reports. We just last Thursday took the Thorn Commission on local governance and that now is going out to the country to let people know what they have reported and what they've recommended. So it's all a work in progress and I look forward to your active participation.
Thank you. I look forward to it too.
Thank you very much. Pierre?
Yeah. Good night, everyone. My name is Pierre Cook, Jr. I just wanted to offer a couple of comments on the future of Barbados and necessarily the Republic transition. And I think over the last couple of months, and even more recently, the last couple of days, I've had significant opportunity to offer some perspectives about, you know, how young people feel about this transition.
Yes, I heard you on brass talks.
And, and for me and for a lot of young persons, this represents the final step in our journey to independence. We had our independence, now we're moving to the Republic and it's taken us to a point where Barbados can look at all levels of governance, political governance, and see something indigenous. So that our identity is shaped by all things Barbadian. I think that's commendable. One of the things that young persons were concerned about is necessarily how would the future of Barbados look? What is the government going to do beyond the Republic date to ensure that the future of Barbados is one that all Barbadians can feel comfortable in? How will they ensure that the Constitution reflects and protects all Barbadians? And I mean, in the last couple of days, looking at the legal aspect of it as a third-year law student, looking at the aspect of it, we've seen that there is significant scope for the protection and representation of all persons in the Constitution. And so, again, I want to commend what is the proposed new Charter of Barbados because that representing shows that we are here to respect and protect all persons irrespective of your belief, your sexual orientation, your gender. However you identify as a Barbadian, you must feel protected and respected in your country. And that is commendable. And just along the lines of development of work and work opportunities and the well-being of Barbadians, I too want to commend, commend Minister Bradshaw again for commitments to helping with the shaping of health in schools and making sure that there's, there are those protections. But equally, I want to see an engaged conversation about young persons in trade. Recently, Minister Caddo, you spoke about, spoke at the Kari Forum Epa Summit. And I think one of the areas I want to see young persons more engaged in and opportunities created in is in the trade space. Trade is a critical area to help the development of health and the advancement of health and alleviation of poverty. And I would like to see some creation or more creation rather of opportunities for young persons within that trade space so that we too can contribute, you know, give back. And in the same way that we're looking at the future of Barbados in every aspect, there must be a young person who's given that opportunity to work and give back to their country. So again, I commend the future Barbados on this work. I commend the government on supporting us and actually putting your money where your mouth is and saying that, you know what, we commit to development of young people. We've put the finances there and we're reaping the products of it. And I hope we can continue that trajectory as we move past November thirtieth and have that engaged discussion about the Constitution and redefine the identity of what Barbados and who a Barbadian is.
Thank you so much, Pierre. Is this Mr Gill at your mic?
Yes.
Hi.
A lot has been said already tonight, so I don't really have that much to add, but I do have a couple of observations. First thing is that I've heard Barbados referred to as little, but there's nothing little about Barbados. This might be a small gathering, but there's nothing little about what's happening tonight. I listened to a speech from Glasgow, there was nothing little about that speech. So when I think about the future of Barbados, I don't think of the word little. So this is... So this is really, really important to me. I'm a mentor at the Harvard Innovation Labs. I've been a mentor for eight years. I guarantee you, this is their 10-year anniversary. I guarantee you that the over 2,500 teams that have passed through that organization, none of them have participated in an event tonight at this stage in their venture where you have a Prime Minister and six ministers all giving support, you know, in the way it has been given. So I just think that, again, there's nothing little about that. So I would just encourage you, we are very proud of our culture. And what we're seeing here tonight is a culture of innovation and entrepreneurship, which now is layered in with a culture that we are already so proud of. The great thing about a culture of innovation and entrepreneurship is that it is global. There's nothing local about entrepreneurship and innovation because it involves the word that was mentioned here so much today, it involves curiosity and involves ideas and all those things are global. So that's just my piece, there's nothing little about Barbados.
Thank you so much, Adrian Gill.
Hi, good evening, everyone. First of all, let me just say I really love the work that I'm seeing coming out of the cohort and proud as a young person as well. The Charter seeks to put down into words the things that we feel are important to us and the values that we want to be identified and defined by as Barbadians. But what it also does is a document that says and outlines where we don't want to go back to a dark part of our history and our society, an oppressed part of a society that we don't want to go back to. However, in 2021, there is an oppressor in this society and that is tenure over ability. And it's an oppressor for so many young people in this room right now. It's an albatross around their necks. And quite often, you have young people who don't have a desire to be the best version of themselves at work because it doesn't seem to make sense. And I'm not talking about, I can hear what people say, you know, some people say under their breath who that person they think they are, they think they come here with two and three degrees, they know nothing or they're forced, right? But I'm not speaking about that person perceived are real. I'm speaking about the young person, that the young professional that comes into a job, puts their head down, that they work hard, they add value to a company. You can see they're progressive, you can see that they are innovative and they add value to the company. But that same person sometimes has to wait 10, 15, even 20 years for any sort of upward mobility in their company. And all that time while that is happening, their lives are passing them by. They can't go to a bank and ask for a mortgage, they can't, they're waiting to start their families. They don't want, they don't know if they can have a child, have a second child because they just can't have this movement and that can't be fair. And if we are having a Charter of Barbados where we're having a rebirth and reaffirming what Barbados means to us and what we're going to do in this, what we're going to look like as a people and how we identify ourselves, it's something that really needs to be addressed because the Charter speaks to personal satisfaction through productivity. It is the opposite that happens. Quite often, what happens when a young person is in that position is that it evokes a sense of depression, despair, and it's just something needs to be done about it because young people are not begging for anything. They're asking to be seen for what they are worth and be given their just dessert. So when young people see, you know, they're doing so much and they look around in the office or anywhere and see that other person that is way above them, that isn't doing anything. The Prime Minister spoke in her opening statements about a place where young people want to be and want to live. And in 13 years, our workforce will shrink. Well, a proper appraisal system and some, being just within the workforce in our public sector is a perfect way to start. And I believe it's something that would really increase productivity in the country and I'm interested to hear how this will be addressed.
Before we go on to the next speaker, Luke, I think I should give one of the ministers the opportunity to respond to that because that's critical, that's a huge critique of the space that we live in. Barbados is not necessarily seen as a meritocracy.
I want to thank Shane for that comment. I must say that I think it is shared by all of us as ministers here and it sometimes is really, a lot of our frustration is borne out by exactly those comments. You know, I think we all came in really bright eyed and bushy-tailed, wanting to change everything in government. And we've hit some of those hurdles where we feel like sometimes people are not as motivated as they should be. We feel as though... Yeah, we, you can hear me? Yeah, we feel sometimes as though people are not as motivated as they should be. And as I said earlier, there are people who have been overlooked because persons above them may not be as qualified and they've not been given the opportunity to be able to showcase what they're capable of doing. You know, I, I'm sorry, the Prime Minister isn't here with me now, but I must tell you that I said to her earlier that we're going to be not fighting for resources, but we're going to have to share the resources of Future Barbados. Because each of us as ministers, in listening to all of you, can see that there are benefits in being able to form strategic alliances with each of the ideas or each of the nine pillars that have been highlighted. It starts with being able to share these ideas, but the fundamental thing is being able to put them into action. I've already committed to the ones who were on the call recently that we need to, we have a lot of work to do. I don't mind sharing, but I must tell you that I think I have first priority right now. And the truth is that already I can see how the ideas are able to infuse the public service as well. And that is also about inclusivity that is in the Charter, being able to include people who are not in the mainstream system but who are able to now add value as well and be able to kind of be the catalyst for the changes that are needed. I think the more that we're able to have people saying, you know, this isn't working, but here is the solution. And then be able to inspire those ideas from the people who have been doing the same thing every day and not getting the same results. I think that is the way in which we actually bring the Charter to life as well. So inclusivity is a key part of this document. It isn't about just continuing to keep a public service that just, you know, remains dormant, but one that is infused by the children having a say, the adults having a say, you having a say in being able to shape the Barbados that we really want.
Thank you. I wanted to have us, give us a specific response to Shane in terms of what are we doing about it? Two things really. One is we are about to enter again the estimates process where we allocate resources for various things and we're doing it in a new way. We spent some time and done some work on a commitment for results model. And that is a model that allows us to measure performance. It is a model that keeps government accountable to doing the things that we say that we're going to do across ministries and departments, but it also shows us where we're not and why. And when we understand why we're not, then we have a sense of accountability and that accountability attaches to the people that are meant to perform. I'm excited about that approach. I think this will be the first thing that we'll be doing it. And as the estimates process unfolds and we, the Prime Minister as Minister of Finance introduced the approach where we are coming into the well and we are accountable for the allocations that are being made. And I think that commitment for results, those words are important, words mean things. That commitment for results will also allow us to track and then reward people who are performing. I think that's important. But the second thing I will say is this, I started work in the UN system. This is actually my first time working in the public sector. I worked in international, what they call international civil service for a long time. And when I came in at 22, I was hired as an economist. And I was told, listen, traditionally, people don't think that looking at gender equality and issues requires economic analysis. And, you know, we, obviously it does because it's an issue of resources and resourcing half the people in the world and we want you to come and tell us, I was 22, how to do that. I had just come back from studying in the Dominican Republic. I didn't think there were any opportunities for me here. I had just moved to DC to start doing some interviews there and I got a call from the UN Office, UNIfam at the time it was here. And they said, we know that you've gone off to live your brand-new life. Mark was talking earlier about brain draining your country, but sometimes there's a question of making the best decision for you. I know that you've gone off to start your brand-new life, but come and help us with this issue of gender and macroeconomics. And I came back and I started that work. And a lot of the people who were in the development field for 40 years asked me what to do. They said, what should we do here? Show us. And I think that that approach and I think all the people here, you know, others in this room will tell you, I hope Rashan will, that anytime a young person calls me and asks me, not necessarily for advice, but to participate in something, I'd never say no. Because it is that model, that disruption to the approach that is going to change Shane, what you're talking about. I've been so used to working and interestingly, most of the people I worked with who gave me these opportunities as a young person were women. But it is a transformational kind of leadership. But I've been privileged to have people who didn't even see my age, who just listened to what I had to contribute. I remember going to a job interview, I had a Mohawk and my hair, pardon, my hair was blue, true story. And the woman who hired me, to this day, she has not looked at my head yet. She looked into my eyes and she listened to what I had to say. And so I think two things, one is that new approach to performance and measuring performance. And the second is that all of us in here has to disrupt that model that you're talking about. We have each individually, from where we sit, we need to give young people the opportunities to excel, real opportunities, right? Not just to send them to do a speech, not just token representation. But I think that if we practice that, that is going to change.
Thank you very much, Grace Caddell. Okay, we are running very low on time, so we're going to have Luke, then Shade, then Farhana and then PM. I will let you have closing words.
Hi, good night to everybody. As Sharida said, I'm Luke Lascaras. And I am going to try to make it very quick. I just really wanted to say that how much I appreciated the Charter of Barbados. It points in a new direction for Barbados, it shapes our future. It really is very much a guiding document for where we see Barbados going. I believe Sharida would have said that it's a future document or a future focus where we want to see Barbados going for the future. And I think that it's a great thing that in 2021 that we can make these steps forward to making a more inclusive Barbados that includes all people irrespective of gender, irrespective of sexual orientation, that is just very much inclusive age. And I also want to say that I very much appreciate the cohort. It is impressive what you've done in such a short space of time and what you are planning to do as well and the work that you plan to do. So I believe that it was six months that it's supposed to be in and I can't really see that work just lasting for six months. So I really hope that it lasts much longer because there's a lot of work they have to do to change Barbados for the future. I also would like to say that I believe the work is transformational of Barbados and it's an integral part of our history in the way that youth has been included in shaping the future of Barbados in the way that it has never been shaped before. I also want to thank that member, the cohort overseas, for including tech and our digital economy and the way forward in terms of entrepreneurship, in terms of banking and the way that digital really will pave the way forward for Barbados and shape our identity, not just in the Caribbean but across the world as a digital hub. And yes, yeah, entrepreneurship, banking, yeah. I also wanted to say though that one thing that I found that was missing, one of the key pillars was the orange economy. I found that that wasn't spoken about enough, right? It hasn't been included as yet in the direction of Future Barbados. Both the orange economy and tourism as they, I find that they are both pillars for our economy, for Barbados, for our future Barbados, for the way that we should point for because culture plays such an integral part in our identity and that's not something that we can afford to leave behind. And tourism plays such an integral part in our economy and both of them intersect. And the fact that it is not being spoken about, I left, I hope that at least is not from my knowledge, but maybe that's a future part of Future Barbados. But in closing, I just wanted to say that everything is, it seems very well. I hope to see more integration between Future Barbados, the cohort and members of government. I like the beginning handshake that I've seen. I'm glad to see the Minister of Innovation here as well because I believe she will play a key part. I also believe the Minister of Youth will also play a key part in the role that the cohort plays and the way that intersects with government and the work that it does. So I just want to say, great job, everybody. Thank you so much to the government for the Charter. It's a great way forward and thank you so much for the cohort that you've done, the work that you've done so far.
Thank you so much, Luke. Shade?
Thank you. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone who's involved in organizing this event tonight. You know, I'm very pleasantly surprised that it is actually future-looking. I expected when it was focused on the Charter that we would be looking at what the document actually said and I honestly expected this to be an exercise in tokenism where on the day before, just on the eve, just on the eve of actually making the transition, we were now having this youth forum. So I was very pleasantly surprised to hear that it was actually focused on what next. You know, even sitting in a chair as a moderator of Brass Taps just yesterday, we spent the entire four hours debating this charter, you know, pushing back. And I found myself pushing back on this very ugly side of Barbados. And I was very heartened to realize that, you know, the young people, they were very, very engaged, not just on social media. They called in, they WhatsApped and they really pushed back. And it really said that young people want a more inclusive, equitable Barbados. And I think that that's what you hear from the cohort and I'm just very, very proud of that cohort. You know, I'm proud to be coaching that cohort and proud of the, and thankful for the opportunity that Future Barbados actually presents, not just for the persons who would have been shortlisted and involved in creating these ideas, but also empowering other young people in other spaces to support them and be a part of that. So you're really kind of creating a ripple effect and that's something that is really, really admirable and to be encouraged. And if I can just switch hats very quickly, in my capacity as Chairperson of the Barbados National Youth Policy Coordinating Committee, I'm really looking forward to getting the necessary confirmations from the Ministry of Youth, Sports and Community Empowerment to partner with Future Barbados in operationalizing the policy that we're developing. Because it's not just about paper, it's about transforming lives and making sure that we are actually executing. So we don't want these young people to spend their time and their energy creating these fantastic ideas that are not actually brought to fruition and we want to avoid all the duplication of effort. So I'm really glad to see that so many ministers are here and engaged and want to take on these ideas. And I really hope that they are empowered to come to fruition as much as possible. And I just, kudos to everybody involved and I look forward to seeing this manifest.
Thank you so much, Shade. Farhana? Don't laugh, I have the same problem. Farhana, I think you could start by telling them we've never felt short a day in our lives.
I'm accustomed. Good night, all. Good night, Honorable Prime Minister and other honorable ministers. I'm really happy to be here. One of the points, one of the key words that continuously keep coming up in our discussion is inclusion. And as a Barbadian Muslim woman of color, I can appreciate 100 times over how specific the language of the Charter is with regards to inclusion. I can also understand though, at a grassroots level, we as Barbadians still have a lot of unpacking to do in order to raise our level of consciousness and the inclusion of people, minority persons within this country, ensuring that our experiences, our lived experiences and our contributions... ensuring that our experiences, our lived experiences and our contributions are realized. I think one of the aspects of that which has been left out of the conversation today is the very importance of reparations. And reparations leads to us understanding who we are and where we've come from and where we need to go to continue to build our country in the light that we want it to be. So my remarks today are going to be brief. And it is to say that on the heels of us becoming a republic and knowing and expecting the visit of Prince Charles, that that be tabled for discussion. Thank you.
Mark?
Thanks, everyone. I want to say all this is wonderful, but where is the money? Yeah? It, it takes cash to care. So one of the things we've got to look at is how do we flip all of this innovation into exports? How do we begin to earn foreign exchange? How we begin to create the wealth for the future? Yeah? And so I had on a hat before as theologian and a hat before as industrial designer, but I want to put on a CEO hat and really commit to helping each of you young people to take these ideas and turn them into foreign exchange. Yeah? It's a very, very important critical step in the midst of this whole thing because it takes US dollars to drive this economy. It takes the US dollars to go digital. It takes US dollars to make all this stuff happen. So we really hope that one of the commitments is really a commitment to earn foreign exchange. Right now, our exports per capita are around 1,200 to 1,500 US dollars per person. We believe we can double that and we can go to 3,000 US dollars per person. And if we do that, we would, we would be earning at least a billion US dollars in exports in all of the different areas that we can do. So I also want to challenge you again. As CEO, we have a commitment to you to take whatever ideas you have within the nine pillars and to flip them into how we earn foreign exchange. We got to make some millionaires in this country. We want to turn some of you young people into millionaires. I get up every morning, I say, how can we make a millionaire today? Yeah? And we really want to encourage each and every one that your ideas are global, that we in Barbados produce global excellence and that we are global citizens and that we can inspire the world and solve some of the biggest problems that this planet is facing, while earning the revenue to do so. So I want to challenge you, let's, let's aim for the stars, okay? Good night.
Thank you so much for that. Prime Minister, you have the closing words?
Thank you very much. I wanted to, before I go into the closing position, but perhaps we're, not for short, you say, but we felt that the orange economy and tourism is pretty much present in Barbados. It's on? The volume no up? Perhaps the, as I said, the orange economy and tourism are the two areas where young people have naturally found themselves coming in. I mean, I used to manage a band, Santia managed a band, long before we came into anything substantive. DJ Ras, otherwise known as Shane. The young people are pretty much in there. We, we, we hope that the execution of our current policy can unlock it for you. And the major area where we need to go, the cultural industries now is film. And we're talking about how we can repurpose some of our old sugar factories. We have a proposal before us and possibly even some of the old plantations. How do we create the song stages? John had a meeting last week for me with persons, for example, out of India with Bollywood. And we're looking to see all of the different things because the only cabinet paper I've ever written in my life was written when I was Minister of Culture and the Ministry of Finance would not respond to it. Tell you my luck. So I have the opportunity to make wrong things right, I hope now. And that was a 26-page paper that looked at what was the framework for incentives. And that's why I say the first 18 months of this government was spent dealing with stabilizing the country. The debt situation was unsustainable. We had to restructure our debt. We had to put a number of systems in place, new legislation for accountability, that kind of thing. And with that, we worked with the International Monetary Fund, the Inter-American Development Bank, Latin American Development Bank, otherwise known as CAF, and started to put things in place with the expectation that come January, February, the 2nd of January 2020, I gave a speech here to the nation talking about the challenge for us to become world-class in seven years. And boom, COVID hit. So in a very real sense, the last 21 months has been absorbed in trying to stabilize and to keep this society whole. And we've done a reasonably good job. Regrettably, we've lost some people and, and that is hard. And we'll continue to be able to have the conversations to make sure we can minimize the number of persons who are affected. But as I've said to the country in the last six, eight weeks, COVID is here to stay. And it is likely to be endemic. And therefore, we have to continue on with the things that we need to do. And, and as a result, you're gonna see us quicken, quicken the pace on a range of things that were put on hold because of COVID. Whether it is the conversations that we need to have, whether it is the actions that we need to execute, whether it's the projects that are going to come on board, there's a lot before us. Mount Gay this morning talked about another $40 million in investment to come in the next few years in order to be able to expand their aged room. We know about the investments in tourism, Lisa, that we've been talking about that are now going to pick up with speed, we believe, come January. Across the board, we, we have Mark talking up to this morning. You met with persons with respect to wave energy and hydrogen. There's a lot of stuff beginning to happen again. So I have every confidence that even within the context of the orange economy and within tourism, that you're going to see more opportunities for young people fully being integrated as we go forward. I want to thank Mark for reminding you of what should be the mantra of everyone. I keep saying we have to earn our way in the world. And he's broken it down even further. By earning our way in the world, we got to earn some US dollars, some pounds, some other foreign currency besides the Barbados dollar. And that's what potentially is our biggest, biggest obstacle as a nation. If we don't earn enough foreign exchange, we're not going to be able to maintain the quality of life that we have. And we learnt that in 1991. We learnt that now again in a different way. When we took over the government, the country had four weeks of foreign reserves, four weeks. And we were about to go in, one, to the win hurricane season, June 1st. And two, we were also forced to pay a debt repayment in that month. That would have brought us back down to two and a half weeks of reserves. And hence why, within one week of winning the government, we suspended debt payments and went to the IMF. And I'm happy to say, today, Standard and Poor's came out and upheld its rating of Barbados and gave us a stable outlook. At the same time, that the majority of countries in the Americas have been the recipient of downgrades or negative outlooks. Now, and I say to myself, this is Barbados. In the middle of an IMF program, in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of three natural disaster events this year. And the international world has confidence in our underlying economic fundamentals and in the direction that we are going. And if we doubted the Standard and Poor's judgment, then go and tell you what the market is saying. We expected Kirk would tell you and Marcia that we could do a debt for nature swap on the basis that once we restricted our debt, that it would trade at a lower level and that we would be able to leverage the difference in costs to be able to create a trust to do marine conservation. One problem, guess what? Barbados debt trading above par, over at 100.5. So there's no margin to be able to do anything. And therefore Kirk and Marcia have been working with our advisors and have been very innovative in coming up with a program that will have the Inter-American Development Bank and Nature Conservancy, which is a 76, 77-year-old trust focused on nature conservancy. That they will buy back, it's 100 million of our debt, US of our debt, and then at a lower rate, reissue it. And the difference in the savings of interest will then go to create the trust so that we can do the kind of marine conservation work that, that, that those who love the blue economy want us to do in order to pay forward for the next few generations. These are the kinds of things that I need you, not just those of you here, but young Barbadians across the board, not to be frightened to engage the world. Because you're only going to secure your living and the living of your parents and grandparents if you go out there and help us engage the world. That's why you hear me pushing all the time, not now, but from 2005, 2006. Global citizens, Bayesian roots. And there's perhaps no better example of it than who? Rihanna. Rihanna is that global citizen with Bayesian roots. And mercifully, her accent reminds everybody that it's not only Bayesian roots, it's Bayesian all the way. And, and, and I think it was yesterday that Billboard came out and named her as one of the top 10 artists of all time. Now, let me put this in context, please. This is a little Bayesian girl in Westbury Road. Catching a ZR to go to Waterford to calm air. Living out her dreams, like all of us do at some point. Given an opportunity as few are given. But very few make of that opportunity what she has made of it. And to transition from her core interest in music to business, to an empire. And I will never forget the evening when I watched her as a 17 or 18-year-old, just after she had the unfortunate incident with Chris Brown. And she sat there in that interview, was it Katie Couric? I don't know who the American, that was who it was?
Dinosaur.
Dinosaur? One of those American interviewers. And Rihanna had on, I think it was an ivory-colored suit. And she sat there absolutely poised. And she said without even batting an eyelid, when I build my empire? Let's talk about that. She didn't say, when I'm successful. She didn't say, when I make it. She said, when I build my empire. And she has built an empire. I am saying to each and every one of us, it is within us not only to dream, but it is within us to commit to the discipline, to be able to ensure that when the rough times come, whether personally, family-wise, job-wise or country-wise, team-wise, community-wise, that we suck it in and we commit ourselves to the task at hand. Because life is not necessarily easy. And the greatest, greatest thing is how do we become a resilient people in every generation? Because if we can teach every generation to be resilient, then we can build, what Lisa called it, institutional scaffolding. We can keep building and building and building and building. But at the same time, let us remember that we're not the first generation to have an impact on the world as Bayjins. How did Barbados have that sugar breeding center in the 19th century, Mark? That led the way in terms of researching breeds of cane? That was way above everyone else. How many people know that the grapefruit comes from Barbados? Discovered not in the 20th century, but before, crossing a shadow of a sweet orange. And there's so many things that if we really study it, we need to remember that we stand on a proud tradition, speckled for sure, because take Parliament where we belong to, it's both been an instrument of oppression, but it's been a tool of empowerment. Because that's how life is. But what must always happen is that we teach each other and pass on and pass on. Because we now need all of us to do the heavy lifting to get out of this moment. It's not going to be easy, but it is entirely possible. Can we do it not on our own collectively? Yes. And the thing that impresses me most about young people is passion. Keep the passion burning. And it is our job to make sure that you keep trusts and you hold trust in the institutions of this country. The biggest problem across the Americas, particularly with people who are minorities or people who were institutionalized to be victims, is the absence of trust. And the major problem in anti-vaxxers comes not so much about the vaccine, but it comes from the absence of trust in the system and the absence of trust in people. And we have a moral duty, and that's why I say every time I speak to the international community, that we have a duty to foster leadership that is moral, ethical, that is strategic, because you can't do everything, and that is global in scope. Because when you come, as you said, Adrian, we may be small, but we are not going to be constrained by that size. And when you come from an island, you know you have no choice but to engage the world. The future is yours. We're gonna hold the baton for you for now, but know, as Marcia said and, and Santia said, it is yours now to take over. And I hope and pray that you will rise to the occasion and that you will bring along many, many others who are not here. Because it is only with skill that we can transform. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Prime Minister.
Indeed.
Thank you so much, Prime Minister. Tamisha, where have you disappeared to?
Ah, okay.
I'm not gonna, there's nothing more I can add to that. So we're gonna have the vote of thanks by
Oh, okay, we will, yes.
Mr. Mysha Aitul Harvey.
Good evening, everyone. You started with me and now you're ending with me. I would like to do the very brief vote of thanks, the notes I was given that I cannot read on my phone.
As I do while you look to read, and you want to borrow my glasses?
Yes.
Come and borrow them. But in the interim, I really want to thank Sharida Granum for hosting this evening. And above all else, I want to thank Jonathan Reed for holding this whole framework together in the last few weeks, few months, sorry. Thank you.
And they were on my list too, so thank you for that. First, we'd like to thank the NCF for this beautiful setup and their great logistical support today. Thank you very much. I know this is a busy week for you all, so we really appreciate that. Our tech team, thank you so much for your professionalism and making it accessible to the world. This is now, this is not in a silo that this happened. We've been tuned into from all over the world, as represented by our lovely guests on the screen. Our medical team, we are all COVID-free, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, we are safe tonight, go home and sleep well. I would like to thank our ministers and senators for joining us. Thank you for listening, thank you for showing up. We look forward to you joining with us at Future Barbados. Bring your ideas and your budgets and we're ready to work with you. To our specially invited guests, Mark and Adrian over there, thank you for being our cheerleaders. We're ready, you're always there to support and advise us. Thank you to the Prime Minister's office for supporting us right along the way. All the administrative support for this program does come from the Prime Minister's office. Thank you to our invited young people. I know you're not part of the cohort and you want to be, but you are an extension of the cohort. And you said you're looking forward to seeing what we're gonna do. We're looking forward to you joining us in what we will do in the future. This is not, we can't do this by ourselves, we can't fight against each other. This is all of us in this together. Thank you to my dear, dear cohort. They, this is the first time in my professional experience that I've worked with such passionate, driven individuals who come, don't know each other from before, but don't do this full-time, but have been able to do remarkable things in a very short period of time. And I truly, I'm truly inspired by you every single day. Even though we change the game on you every single day and you yell at me every single day, I thank you for believing in this journey and continuing. We have a lot of work to do and clearly more work soon as the other ministers come and join us. So this is, as Luke said, this is not just six months, we're in this for the long haul. Next on my list is, I would like to thank my core team. You don't see us? This is, Jonathan has the ideas, Riva and Jamila in the shadows, make it happen with my support. Truly, this is, this is about them running around and making the phone calls and, and sending the emails. This is about what's happening and we're building that infrastructure. So Future Barbados is not just a memory, it is a longstanding part of, of the institution that is Barbados. And finally, thank you to our Prime Minister. You believed in us, you believed in this idea and you brought us together and you have listened. You have put your money where your, where your heart is and we're really here, we will not disappoint you. This is only the beginning, as I said. We are coming with our histories as well, the history of the country, the history of the people before us. And we're here to craft our futures together. So ladies and gentlemen, I stand between you and curfew and the refreshments. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to our audience online, thank you for the support. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to our audience online. Thank you for the support. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you so much. Our entertainment for the evening, Tamisha. Thank you, everyone. Let's go have some refreshments.